The Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program, or HIRUC, is a new way to pay for me.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the committee meeting of September 3rd. Today, we will start off with our Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee. Mr. Bulisaw.
Sorry, Chair. I think that's a...
Sorry, yeah, we'll call the...
Oh, I keep... Okay, sorry.
But I did introduce...
We'll call the Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee to order. Can we read the only item?
Communication from Councilmember Bulisaw, requesting the presence of the Director of Finance, the Deputy Director of Finance, the DMV Administrator, and the Hawaii Department of Transportation, Highways Division, Road Usage Charge Program Manager, to provide a briefing relating to the Hawaii program.
Take it away, councilmember.
I will to receive.
Second.
Thank you, Committee Chair Holland, and thank you to our guests who are here to do the presentations. I would like to ask you guys if you would like to join us in front. And I requested this, as you guys know, we're making some changes for looking at how we manage our roads and what how... The new program that is going through the state, and I wanted to make sure that all of our committee know what those changes are, what that looks like. So we sent an over invitation for our team at the state to share what's the update of what's going on with the RUC program and see if any council members or committee have any questions. So take it away. And then you want to press the button till it turns green, introduce yourself, and...
Hi, good morning, Council Chair and members of the council. Thank you very much for having the Hawaii Department of Transportation here to speak with you this morning. My name is Mindy Kimora, and I'm with the Hawaii DOT, and I'm the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program Manager. So today, I'll be providing a briefing on the implementation efforts of the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program and how that ties into the county road usage charge that we've previously introduced into legislation for the past two sessions. So just a brief briefing of the agenda. I'm going to provide some background information on the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program, as well as an update on our program implementation and communication efforts statewide, and then open the floor to any questions. So briefly touching on some background information, the main reason why the Hawaii Department of Transportation has looked into this is because we are seeing the gasoline-powered vehicles across the state are increasing and becoming more efficient. We're also seeing a rapid adoption of electric vehicles statewide as we currently rank second in the nation for EV adoption. In 2018, when the Road Usage Charge Program first began, we saw less than 1% of EV statewide. Right now, we're looking at a 3.5% increase since then. So in Hawaii, we pay a state, federal, and a county fuel tax. Right now, the federal fuel tax is set at 18.4 cents per gallon. The state fuel tax at 16 cents per gallon, and for the County of Kauai, the fuel tax rate is set at 17 cents per gallon. So the cost of the fuel tax itself is about 10% of the cost, and the remaining 90% is of the cost of fuel itself. And then some statistics for the County of Kauai and statewide. As of June 2025, so this year, we saw a little over 37,000 EVs registered statewide, and for the County of Kauai, there's around 1,182 EVs. And for the County of Kauai, an average driver drives around 9,000 miles annually. So Road Usage Charge, or A RUC, is a roadway consumption charge that assesses a per-mile fee on a driver based on how many miles they drive. It does three things. It employs the user-pay model that is similar to the motor fuel tax. It also provides a fair payment for the public roadways that all of our residents use, and it provides long-term funding sustainability to upkeep and maintain our transportation networks. So looking at this chart, it displays what a road usage charge is and how it is a fair way of funding our transportation system. In the light green shades, you can see that lower-efficiency vehicles are paying a lot of the backbone for our state fuel tax compared to hybrid and high-efficiency vehicles, or even electric vehicles. With the Road Usage Charge, it negates this inequity in where, no matter what type of vehicle you're able to drive or afford, all drivers will pay the same in terms of their taxation. So looking at what this means in terms of our revenue, the Road Usage Charge is a sustainable source for funding our future because as we look at their state fuel tax within the next 25 years, we can see how that state gas tax is declining. With the Road Usage Charge specifically just on electric vehicles, we can see how the Road Usage Charge helps fulfill the gap from that funding mechanism that we're losing. So this past 2025 legislative session, the state introduced House Bill 1161 to vote chambers, and it passed vote chambers, but no action was taken. The House Bill 1161, the main motive of this was to authorize counties to enact the Road Usage Charge similar to the state program, but to help as a replacement for the county. but to help as a replacement for the county fuel tax. In addition to this, the legislation also established or sought to establish a $50 default Road Usage Charge, which would then increase to $80 beginning July 1st, 2028. And I'll get a little bit more into why those dates play out in the future slides. It also seeks to remove the Road Usage Charge cap of $50 that currently exists in the statute today. So while this bill did not pass during this past session, these policy objectives are still important to the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program and for the counties. The Hawaii Department of Transportation does plan on reintroducing this bill this coming legislative session. And we did see that in this bill, the policy did have strong support across both chambers. And we do understand that the bill got caught up in some end-of-discussion, end-of-session political debates and negotiating that weren't related to the substantial details of what the bill comprised of. So now, a quick update on how the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program implementation efforts have been ongoing. So Act 222 was passed during the 2023 legislative session, making Hawaii the fourth state in the nation to adopt a Road Usage Charge Program. These are some of the timelines that are outlined in that legislation. So beginning July 1st of this year, EV drivers are presented the option to either pay a state per-mile Road Usage Charge that's capped at $50, or they can just pay a flat annual Road Usage Charge of $50. The state per-mile Road Usage Charge rate is set in legislation at $8 per 1,000 miles, which equates to less than a penny per mile. For the first three years of the program, so until July 1st, 2028, EV drivers have that choice between the per-mile or the flat fee. However, once July 1st, 2028 begins, the flat annual Road Usage Charge choice goes away, and all EV drivers will need to pay the per-mile Road Usage Charge. In the meantime, the legislation also requires that the Department of Transportation also create a long-term transition plan for all light-duty vehicles to be included in this Road Usage Charge Program no later than 2033. So as I mentioned before, HIRUC launched on July 1st of this year, and at the time of annual registration renewal, EV owners or eligible EV owners will be able to see that choice between paying the per-mile Road Usage Charge or the flat annual Road Usage Charge. Right now, the per-mile Road Usage Charge is capped at $50, and the reason for that is because both options for the per-mile Road Usage Charge and the flat annual Road Usage Charge seek to replace the previous $50 EV registration surcharge that was already in place. So this is what the program looks like from an EV owner's experience. Starting July 1st of this year, eligible EV owners will receive the registration renewal notice. And on the registration renewal notice, these EV owners will be able to choose their option of what their Road Usage Charge choice is going to be. Once they go ahead and make their choice, it's then added to the time of their registration renewal, and the Road Usage Charge fee is due at the same time of registration renewal. So it just shows up on that registration, just like another line item, like the county weight tax and registration fees. Their choice is then captured, and then their registration certificate can be printed. So in terms of the EV owner experience, there is really no additional step that they need to do to become enrolled in this program or to even pay their fee for this program. So the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program does leverage the existing vehicle inspection, which ensures that all vehicles are inspected regularly on an annual basis. This includes the odometer reading being captured as part of that inspection process, and that's how we get that mileage data needed to appropriately charge the Road Usage Charge fees. I do also want to note that in our Phase 1 demonstration project, leveraging an existing system such as our inspections was the most favored amongst Hawaii residents as compared to other methods such as plug-in devices or smartphone app readings. So like I mentioned before, this is how EV drivers are notified of their eligibility for the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program. On that registration renewal notice, we have a box on there that shows them to choose either between the per-mile Road Usage Charge or the flat annual fee. Because the per-mile Road Usage Charge is capped at $50 right now, EV drivers can only benefit from being enrolled in the program. That's why on the notice, you only see one box that EV drivers can choose to just pay the flat annual if they choose so. And then a further question as to what eligible EV means. Specifically for the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program, there's specific criteria that was set into legislation as to what electric vehicles were eligible for the program. So the vehicles have to be registered in Hawaii, and they have to be fully electric, meaning not plug-in hybrid or hybrid. And the reason for that distinction is because PGVs and hybrids do pay a little on the gas tax, so we want to make sure that we're not double-charging them for the gas tax and for the Road Usage Charge. The vehicles also have to have three or more wheels, and it must operate over 35 miles per hour, and then have a gross vehicle weight rating of 10,000 pounds or less, so really hitting those light-duty vehicle classifications. So in our program, our program administrator is the Hawaii Department of Transportation, but we do really rely on our key partners on implementation and communications with the County Department of Finance and the County DMV. So as such, the Hawaii Department of Transportation has worked to implement an Implementation Working Group, also known as our IWG, which consists of the four counties and the City and County Honolulu Department of Information Technology. And this group really convened to provide technical and communication coordination ahead of the launch of the program. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce County Department of Motor Vehicles Administrator Jeremy Lee to give a few words on his experience with our Implementation Working Group.
Council Chair, Committee Member Bulasun, and all council members, Jeremy Lee for the record. We were engaged early and often by HDOT Program Administrator about the hybrid program, bringing us along the way and understanding about why this was being done and how it was going to impact all of our customers here at the county level, putting together a pretty comprehensive package of understanding for our team members of how we do our business under this new rule, and what impact will be occurring for our customers, and how we'll address any kind of one-off cases and how we deal with our customer concerns and questions that they might have. So along the process, we've learned a lot. We've grown into understanding about how this will roll out, what programmatic steps in operations we have to take to be able to address this change, and really fairly well-put-together program, comprehensively touching all elements of our customer engagement, making sure that every way that our customers would be able to currently get work processed through had been considered, how we communicate out about these first phase of people and the potentiality of other customers through coconut wireless, asking questions and getting information out. There is a RUC calculator for people, so even if you are not in Phase 1, HDOT has put together a calculator for folks that are interested. They can put in their vehicle information and then put in the average amount of miles that they would assume driving and give them a sense of what it is that they will be experiencing in their future phases as they roll out into their vehicle types. But we've been at it for a good two years now, Mindy. Like Mindy mentioned, we rolled this thing out in July, and luckily enough, it's been smooth. We have a fairly small grouping per month of individuals that are being affected by this RUC change, and we're able to soft-touch everybody, make sure that they're taken care of, and address any concerns in deployment. Nothing that we do will always be 100%. This program, just like that, experiences a couple of little hitches that we have to work through. Real great communication with HDOT and that Department of Information Technology Group through City County Honolulu. Worked through those things pretty quickly, and so far, so good.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, so like I said, and like Jeremy mentioned, there's been really close collaboration between the Department of Transportation and the County DMVs, mainly because we do recognize that at the time of registration, they are the forefront helpers for our residents. So as such, we've developed internal materials, including FAQs, as well as a HIRUC introduction video, and also a customer escalation matrix to really problem-solve how to address any customer inquiries that come in through the DMVs about the program, and how that can be escalated further so that our customers and our residents are satisfied with the way that the program operates. In addition to that, we've also conducted an in-person DMV training on June 17th of this year to really talk story with the clerks at the DMVs to figure out what are their pain points, how can we help, what kind of questions do they anticipate seeing, and how we can best collaborate even further. So now, looking further into the program communication efforts, aside from the technical implementation stuff. Like Jeremy mentioned, our Hawaii Road Usage Charge, our hiruc.org website does feature a Road Usage Charge calculator on there. It also has all the background information about the program. So in this interactive website, drivers can go ahead and insert their annual mileage that they think that they drive, and the calculator will automatically calculate what the Road Usage Charge fee would look like. In addition to that, if we're looking at our hiruc.org web sessions, especially right before launch occurred, there's two huge spikes that we see in our website activity. One right when the postcards for the HIRUC program were mailed, and then one right after our press release was released by HDOT, announcing the launch of the program. So during this period span of just about a week, we saw over 3,000 sessions improved in our website activity. So 3,000 more residents have become aware of the program just from the press release and the postcards mailed alone. So like I mentioned before, this is a snapshot of what the Hawaii Road Usage Charge postcard looks like. So since July of this year, we've been mailing these postcards to EV owners whose registration is, registration renewal is coming up. The main reason why we've went and pushed forward with this effort is because we don't want that registration renewal notice to be the first time that a driver hears about the program. This postcard gives them an overview of what the program is and also directs them to the website if they have any further questions. So this is an ongoing effort by the Hawaii Department of Transportation. We are going to continue sending these postcards on a monthly basis for any drivers who are going to be renewing throughout the year. In addition to that, we've also led posts, led some posts for some social media, including Facebook, Instagram, and X slash Twitter. And a huge thanks to the County of Kauai for reposting all of our press release and social media information. A quick snapshot from our media conversations as well. So we've tracked over 20 news stories across all four counties and across the country with highlights about the Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program. Like I briefly mentioned before, we are the fourth program in the nation. So there's a lot of eyes on Hawaii in terms of how the program is rolling out and what the residents' perception of the program is. So part of that media conversation includes a quote from the, from your county mayor, Mayor Kauakami, as well as the letter to the editor from the Honolulu Star advertiser. And then, in addition to that, on our hiruc.org website, we also have been working in partnership with the Customer Services Department at the City and County of Honolulu to craft this video to really give a quick snapshot of what the program looks like. The Hawaii Road Usage Charge Program, or HIRUC, is a new way to pay for maintenance on the state roads and bridges we drive on every day. As more vehicles in Hawaii are becoming more fuel-efficient, HIRUC is one way to replace gas taxes. Starting July 1st, drivers of most electric vehicles will be able to choose between paying a state flat annual fee and a per-mile Road Usage Charge capped at $50 per year at the time of their registration renewal. For more information on the Hawaii Road Usage Charge, check out hiruc.org. So that's just one of our video projects that we work on. We are looking at putting out more videos and more communications material, especially as we do begin to expand the program. And that is all I have for you today. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
My broad question is, you're rolling this out, you're doing it just for purely electric vehicles. It's, you know, a different method, and it's, what you're saying is fair, or it seems your approach is primarily just to make up that gap of lost revenue. But ultimately, are you trying to get to a place where all vehicles will be on RUC so that where the gas tax will go away completely? And if that's so, how long is that going to take?
Yeah, so part of our legislation for the program requires that long-term transition plan, and that's for all light-duty vehicles, both ICE-powered and other alternative fuels, to be included in the program no later than 2033. So that's the target date. We do have a Long-Term Transition Advisory Group, which the County Department of Motor Vehicles is also part of. And we're also talking with that group to figure out how are we going to take the next phased approach for this program? What does expansion look like and key considerations in terms of impacts, too?
Councilmember Holland?
Thank you. So what about hybrid vehicles?
Yes, so that is what we're looking at in terms of the next phase. So that's a possible next phase for the program is PHEVs and hybrids.
Is what?
PHEV, so plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, and then just purely hybrid vehicles. One thing that we do know that we have to be careful about in consideration to these vehicles is that some hybrids do fill up gas. So like I mentioned before, we want to make sure that the Road Usage Charge is a replacement for the state fuel tax. So we need to make sure that we're either crediting them for the fuel that they are paying for at the pump, and that needs to be methodically thought out on the back end to make sure that double taxation.
And so when we eventually replace the gas tax, the thought is, is people who, maybe they're county council members and drive all the time, we would pay for a lot more road usage than if we barely left our home. So it's, I guess that happens already, though, with gas, right? Okay, that's basically my questions.
Any other questions, Chair?
Thank you. I'm just curious, and I don't know if you know this, but, you know, based on the conversion from gas vehicles to electric, what was the loss in revenue to the state versus what is the, I'm trying to figure out if there's a net benefit or net loss with this program to the state, because the administration of this program is not free. It's going to increase as well in all these postcards that you're sending out. So I'm just curious, what is the net benefit to the state?
Yeah, so in terms of cost of implementation and looking at the programs across the country, we have the least amount of cost of administration, and mainly because we're utilizing all of the existing registration and safety inspection systems that are already in place today. In terms of the revenue that we are going to be seeing, we are looking at getting those reports by the end of this month to see what those numbers look like in comparison to the EV surcharge. But like I mentioned before, right now, electric vehicles are paying a fuel tax right now. So this is meant to supplement that loss that we are seeing because they're not paying that fuel tax.
Right, so what was the, I mean, I'm sure someone tried to figure out what the projected revenue would be, right? Based on the amount of cars and maybe an average number of miles given per year, and a split between, oh, I'm sorry, a split between the $50 flat fee versus... I'm just curious if the state did a full analysis on what this is actually going to generate.
So the Road Usage Charge Program is not, the purpose of the program isn't to increase revenue. The Road Usage Charge rate is set to be revenue-neutral to what an average vehicle pays for the fuel tax today. Further discussions as to if we can index maybe the Road Usage Charge to inflation to help either the inflation cost and increase the revenues, that might be a possibility later. But in terms of the current legislation that was passed, any talks about increasing the rate to increase revenues resulted in the bill being lost.
I noticed there's a few extra slides at the end.
Yeah.
Those kind of discuss some of the revenue as well. Those kind of discuss some of the revenue as well, but we didn't go through those.
Yeah, so we can look into those. So that looks at specifically the revenue for the County of Kauai. Should you guys... For the County of Kauai. So like the state, revenues that we are seeing increasing, we do assume that the counties are also going to fall suit in terms of the county fuel taxes decreasing over time as well. So given that the state has implemented the program and the collaboration that we're already having with the county DMVs and the county councils, we would like to furthermore pursue that collaboration and work towards an implementation for a county road usage charge to help supplement your county fuel tax revenue loss.
I have another question, Hannah. Thank you. I have another question, and it's partly for the public. Is, what's the definition, where does light vehicle end and heavy vehicles start? And what's the rationale between putting light-duty vehicles on this as opposed to heavy-duty vehicles?
Yeah, so the weight cutoff threshold for light-duty vehicles is 10,000 pounds. And that's the gross vehicle weight rating.
So would that be like a Ford F-350, or what would 250?
Like your regular sedans, your SUVs, your standard SUVs. Basically, anything outside of the commercial trucking industry. There's been conversations on the continental U.S. regarding a road usage charge specifically for heavyweight vehicles, because we do realize that they do more damage to our roads and we have to maintain them more often. That's something that we do need to talk with our industry and the trucking industries, because they already face if the regulations as well as the weight tax fees that they have to pay as well. So that's a further stuff that we're also going to be looking in towards.
Okay, and when we have these heavy trucks, which by the way, aren't weighed here, right? So all our big trucks aren't weighed on Kauai. Meaning, you know, container trucks, you know, big trucks. We figure they're paying for their road usage charge through their fuel. That's how, because they're heavy, but they have to use a lot more fuel per gallon.
Correct, yes.
On the hybrid? It's not eligible, right, you said? But then you also mentioned, what was the follow-up on that, with the hybrid part?
And that, like, the reason why they're not eligible for the program? Well, because they pay the fuel tax today. There's some hybrid vehicles that do fill up gas, or they're partially gas-powered. So we want to make sure that we're not charging them the state fuel tax and the road usage charge. So we have to make those calculations to figure out, are we going to be crediting them for the fuel tax that they did pay at the pump? And then, yes.
Coming back.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
In your chart, when you talk about remove, the legislation would have removed the RUC cap of $50 in the state RUC effective July 1st, 2028. And then you say the HDOT will discuss removal of that cap in future legislation to ensure sustainable RUC program. What are you saying with that? I mean, are you eliminating the flat rate completely? And therefore, some people will actually pay more than $50, and who would that be?
So right now, the current legislation is that once July 1st, 2020 hits, the flat fee option goes away. So it'll only be the per-mile road usage charge. But the program is still capped at $50 in its current legislation. So during this next legislative session, we want to remove that $50 cap, really because some of our residents, especially who drive further distances, their annual fuel tax might equate to $80 if you do the calculations. So we want to make sure that there's a sense of fairness between the miles that are driven for an ICE vehicle and the miles that are driven for an electric vehicle. And having that $50 cap in place really isn't that equitable number.
And then when you talk about being equitable, do you foresee in the future looking at maybe like tiered rates for bigger vehicles versus smaller vehicles?
Yeah, so that's a discussion that we're also having with our long-term advisory group, is seeing, do we want to take considerations into low-income households? Are we going to have different rate structures? What is that going to look like? Ultimately, this decision does come down to legislatures and what they're comfortable with passing in terms of rate setting. But we can propose some sort of structure to address those concerns.
And then my last question is kind of a broad, general one. When you talk about the fuel tax and that it pays for roads and bridges, is that all it pays for?
The road usage charge and the state fuel tax just goes into our state highway general fund, so it can be used for a multitude of projects.
Okay, because the general fund. The other thought I had, and I haven't followed it in the ledge, but I would imagine in their discussions and stuff, they're not just talking about the deterioration of the roads and the weight of the vehicle on the road, but they're probably also talking about moving people away from, you know, polluting uses versus clean uses. And I would imagine, hopefully, some of that funds is actually helped to clean up the environment too, or make things better.
Yeah. What's interesting is that we did do a focus group study at the beginning of last year, specifically talking to EV owners and drivers who have ICE vehicles as well, and asking them, do they feel disincentivized to purchase an EV because of this program? Surprisingly, a lot of our residents wanted to buy EVs because of this program. We do have residents who do drive shorter distances, and if they're paying a high fuel tax because they have, they can't afford an electric vehicle, or just based on their living situations or their income, this program does benefit them in the sense where they're purely being charged for the miles that they drive. So that was interesting.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Some more questions. First, thank you, Mindy, for coming and the team for being here. First question, as you rolled out the communications, I'm sure you got the feedback of, is this an additional charge on top of what we're currently paying? Can you clarify to the community how this works?
So the state, on the state side, we already had a $50 EV registration in place. That's been currently within the last 10 years, I believe it was passed. So EV owners have been paying that $50 surcharge. The difficulty with that and bringing the HIRAC program to the light is because that $50 surcharge was lumped into your registration fee, and it wasn't explicitly called out. So a lot of EV owners didn't know they were paying that fee. So now with the HIRAC program, we're trying to be as transparent as possible, showing you how many miles you're actually driving and what that fee looks like. And it's meant to be a replacement for that $50 EV registration surcharge.
And then just to follow up, there is a lot of electric bikes that do go faster than 35 miles per hour? And I'm not sure if they're registered as motor vehicles or bikes. How do you, how is, how are you guys addressing that?
In the motor vehicle registration system, they are classified as e-bikes or bikes. But then part of our HIRAC program, when we do the cross-check of eligibility for the program, there's also a requirement of three more wheels. So those e-bikes aren't included in the program.
In the long-term plan, will that be a consideration if the industry continues to produce faster bikes used for more highway and roadway usage?
Yeah, we could take that into consideration in that long-term transition plan.
Councilmember Cowden?
When I'm thinking about road usage and our bridges, and I have concerns about weight limits. So EVs aren't typically heavy, although I wonder about our EV buses. I'm not sure if they've arrived yet. I haven't seen us get ready to start use them. But when we don't have scales anywhere, or, I don't know if this is a question for you or for one of the other team. Thank you all for coming, by the way. We've got, you know, you've got all these people supporting you. Thank you. When we have heavy vehicles and we have, you know, old county bridges, when we're looking at vehicle impact and road usage, how do we, how are we looking at that? Like, I know this EV piece isn't probably looking that, even on buses. Is the EV element looking at the weight of the buses even?
Not for buses specifically, because they fall within that medium-to-heavy-duty vehicle rating.
So I don't know if anybody else could answer that, or if this isn't the right question to be asking here, but I'm just curious about heavy vehicles on 100-year-old county bridges. How do we, how do we manage that?
Hi, good morning, Chair and members of the committee. I'm Robin Shishido, Deputy Director for Transportation and Highways. So I think what you're referring to is more, you know, we have a motor vehicle safety officer. We have a vacant position on Kauai, I think, and, you know, we've been interviewing. But that position for us is the one that would enforce the weight. And they do would put out scales, and unfortunately on Kauai, it's been vacant for some time now. You know, with new technology also coming in, put the way in motion. So that's something else, you know, we're looking at putting in our harbors, you know, catching those heavy trucks coming out, and something we can implement.
When we, when we take the container off the barge, though, we must know how much that weighs. And so we put it on there. Do we ever look at which, where it's going? Because some of these little bridges are pretty small, and I see big trucks on them.
Yeah, we have not, you know, and something at the harbors we're looking at is having some license plate readers, and also getting more information from the containers as well to see where all of our cargo are going. Something we haven't put in yet, but, you know, discussion to implement.
Okay, thank you for that, and that's probably another discussion. But I think it's an important one when we look at the exhaustion, you know, in both our state and county bridges. I appreciate all this effort being put on the light vehicles. It seems like heavy vehicles are probably where we need to figure out we're making bridge safety.
Thank you guys very much. Any other questions?
Just one more question. So if all goes as planned, when should we expect the fuel tax to go away? For everyone?
Yeah, so no later than 2033 is when we need, when we're supposed to legislatively have this program rolled out. Whether that looks like the fuel tax being completely eliminated, or drivers being credited for the fuel tax if they are paying at the pump, that's still to be discussed in that long-term transition plan, because we do recognize that the program is only for light-duty vehicles. So how are we going to differentiate at the pump between light-duty versus heavy-duty vehicles? So that's a discussion, but 2033 is the target deadline.
Any other questions?
And I think Ms. Holland mentioned about the loss of revenue to the counties because of the county fuel tax. So that's all going to be part of your discussion?
Yes, so right now with the legislation, before the counties can move forward with the program, we need state legislative approval to actually have you guys implement a program. So that's what the House Bill 1161 from last year sought to do. So, so once that legislation gets passed, then it, the ball's kind of in your court in terms of what you guys decide what that rate looks like and how we'd like to best implement the program.
Thank you.
Just to clarify on this last point, so it needs to, Act 222 needs to be amended through House Bill 11, 1161 that you're introducing next legislative session so that the county can adopt a RUC?
Yeah, so it's actually going to be a separate piece of legislation. Act 222 is the state road usage charge program, and then this new piece of legislation that we're reintroducing is county road usage charge legislation.
That was the 1161?
Yes.
Any other counsel, then, or question? Yes?
Just one last thing. So in Jeremy's comments, he talked about they were approached early and often over the last two years. So, and I know you've come before this council before too, maybe a couple of times in the last couple of years. So wouldn't it make sense that maybe after the next legislation, you just plan to come back again and give us an update? Because this depends on what happens at the legislature, as far as when we ultimately can implement it.
Yeah, more than happy to come back.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anybody else have questions? Pause for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience or online wanting to testify on this item? And yeah, you guys are good. Thank you. Happy Wednesday, Mr. Psychos.
Thank you. For the record, Lonnie Psychos. I want to thank the people from the state very much for their presentation. It was very informative. It's a fairly complex issue with all the different types of vehicles and whatnot. So a very good presentation. But I came up to speak because of the issue that Member Cowden brought up, which has to do with overweight vehicles. So I worked in the freight and towing industry. From the maritime side, we handled hundreds of thousands of containers. Here in Hawaii, it's not uncommon to get containers that weigh 60,000 pounds. A fully loaded 40-foot container can have as much as 80,000 pounds, plus the weight of the trailer, the weight of the container itself, and the weight of the tractor pulling the trailer. And so none of our bridges are built to sustain these weight loads. And a loaded container like that going down the highway puts the same stress on the highway that something like six or seven thousand cars do. The amount of damage done by overweight trucks is unseen by us, but it's massive. I lived in Hana for about 30 years. Fortunately for us, Hana Highway has three turns that are too tight to get a 40-foot trailer through. You can only get a 20-foot trailer through. But we had an issue with the damage to our bridges with the small number of trailers that came out to Hana versus here where, you know, there's, I don't know, 100 containers a week going to our supermarkets and then construction sites. I have no idea what the trailer load is. But the failure to put a weigh station on Kauai, to me, is criminal, right? This is a conspiracy to allow our bridges to get destroyed, and then everybody involved's going to go, who, me? But that's the fact of this, is if we continue to allow overloaded, for our highways, overloaded containers, there's no way we can keep up with the damage financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Bruce Hart. I'll just echo what Mr. Psychos said. It's a long time ago, but when I lived in Washington State, which by the way, has excellent roads, they were addressing these kind of issues. That's a long time ago. They actually, and this is not to pick upon truckers. Our, we're also talking the tour buses. I don't know what one of those fully loaded tour buses weighs, but it must weigh quite a bit. So it's not picking on them, it's just a fact. Somewhere, 80,000 pounds traveling over one mile of road is going to do approximately, I mean, it's, you know, you have to figure it out each individual case, but it's going to do the damage of, say, six to seven thousand cars driving over that same mile. And so I'm, I don't really understand why the state hasn't... I mean, they should be looking at this. And as I was saying all those years ago, they actually had taxes in regards to, that were equitable to the trucking industry, and it benefited the trucking industry. They were actually able even that far ago to build a dedicated truck lane. And so the trucks could get right through, and they didn't have to fight traffic and that kind of thing. So there are benefits to the truckers from something like this. But I think it should be addressed, not just for the bridges, just for the road. You see here oftentimes with some of the, we get warm weather, and we have to construct our roads out of materials that are sometimes less than the best. You know, coral just doesn't work as a foundation for a road. It will absorb moisture, and it will crush, and it's not absorbing, it's not carrying the weight anymore. And you see where there are intersections where these heavy vehicles have actually pushed the pavement, and they, it just separates. When the foundation of a road goes, the road goes. When the foundation of a road goes, the road goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Anybody else for testimony? We're gonna call the meeting back to order for final discussion for the members. Yeah?
I, I couldn't tell, does the Department of Transportation want to comment? Do you have something to say? Can?
Come on, Larry. We like to hear from you anyway.
Yeah.
Good morning, Committee Chair for Holland and members of the committee. My name is Larry Dill. I am the Highways Administrator for the Hawaii Department of Transportation, former county engineer. Good to be back. We had some good comments raised in the Q and A, and we'd like to touch on a couple of those things. Valid concerns about the condition of all of our bridges on Kauai, both state and county bridges. FYI, any bridge on our infrastructure, and that's County Two, that exceeds 20 feet in length is a federal aid-eligible bridge. And all those bridges are subject, excuse me, to the federal required bridge inspection program. So all of those bridges are inspected on a very routine basis, and those are maintained in accordance with those now. And that's why you see big projects happening like the Waileua Bridge right now. We're redoing all the foundation and that through that bridge inspection program to determine issues with those bridges. And so I can, I can tell you that all those bridges are maintained in accordance with that program. The required weight limit for any vehicles on the roads and bridges, the default is 88,000 pounds. And so any vehicle that's less than that is in compliance with federal requirements and state and county requirements. And you see occasionally, we do post bridges, certainly up on the North Shore, some of our smaller bridges. We've posted them at less than that because those bridges don't have the capacity to handle the full weights. Okay? Now, any program like that is subject to enforcement of that program. And as our deputy mentioned earlier in his testimony, our motor vehicle safety officer position on Kauai has been vacant, you know, since I was the district engineer on Kauai. Very difficult position to fill. But we'd have support from our Motor Vehicle Safety Division on Oahu, and they have come over here occasionally and they set up temporary scales we have at our base yard that our officer used to, used to implement when he was here to do checks on the roads. But I, I do agree that the fact that we don't have enough enforcement simply because our position is vacant. So we're working with Oahu to try and get them over here more often to get more enforcement of that requirement on our highways. Do you have any more to add?
Yeah, I'll just also add, you know, with the system here in Hawaii, it's a hub and spoke. So when cargo does come in, it comes to Oahu and they go through a weigh station. And then it gets, you know, onto like Young Brothers, which then comes throughout the island. So it is weighed when it first comes to Hawaii, in that sense.
So I have a follow-up question on that. So when it's weighed, what's the limiter, like, like you, you, there's a certain amount of weight? And is there, if you go, oh, this is too heavy for the roads, they wouldn't be allowed to bring it over?
Yeah, so like at the San Island where they would come out, there's a weigh-in motion which initially weighs the truck, and if it's flagged as being overweight and there's some tolerance, then it gets pulled over into the inspection site. And then they can do a full inspection and check the weight, check the cargo, and turn the truck around if it's too heavy.
But, but we're talking about the boats because it's not gonna be on a, I mean, like, does Matsons or whatever gets dropped when they bring the car? Do we have any way that we're looking at what the weight can be on those containers? So if it's over a certain weight, like over 80,000 pounds, they would say you can't put it on the boat?
When it comes here, I'm not sure when it leaves wherever it comes, if they weighed prior, but when it arrives here, then we do weigh, like on Oahu?
On Oahu? So if it was coming from Matsons to Kauai, there would be no interim weight placed in Hawaii?
Right, so I don't, I don't think Matson comes directly to Kauai. I think it all goes to Oahu and then it goes to like Young Brothers.
I, I, I don't wanna get interrupting the committees, but this is
So far off.
Way off the topic.
We're gonna pull it back in.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you guys for your additional comments. Just gonna call it back to order for discussion, so any members have discussion?
So I'll first thank Committee Chair for allowing us to have this on briefing and the council members for allowing us to have this in the briefing. Thank you to our guests for flying in and being with us and sharing us about the program. I've been tracking this since first elected, three years ago, and they've been presenting every year and have worked collaboratively with our county administration. So I wanna thank our county administration for being on the forefront, for allowing us to see how we can find equitable solutions for this challenge that we're all facing. I readily admit that I'm an EV driver and have been an EV driver for the last five years. And it feels super guilty in those five years that I have not contributed to my community through fuel tax because I don't pay for gas. And I want my, our roads to be maintained and properly cared for, and I wanna participate as an EV driver. So I'm glad that the rollout has been smooth for, on the state side. And I am a big proponent and hopeful that our state legislature were hopefully all watching, every single one of them, because they love watching county council meetings, they're so exciting. That they look at the introduction of the bill next year and fully support it so that our county teams can do our implementation. So we can share in, as an EV driver, to also participate as a county EV surcharge for the high RUC. And I will gladly say on the floor that I look forward to be able to introduce a bill to get that going for us here on the county side. So thank you again for the presentation, and thank you for the community for staying in touch with this. I know there's a lot of questions when the rollout came out in the communications. And I'm glad that our State Department, DOT, and our, our county team has responded so well to communicate what needs to be done and what to understand. So thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullison. Yes?
I wanna thank Councilmember Bullison for putting this on the agenda. I was really pleased to see it. I wanna thank Mindy for doing a really great presentation and all the work that's behind it. And it's, you know, really wonderful that the team above you chose to come. So I guess got some extra questions in there, but I think road usage is really important. And so I appreciate the other times that you all have come because it helps us be prepared for it. I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about this element, and I, I don't mind paying more if it was on the gas piece because I, I use the road a lot, right? So I think we're going in a good direction and I support it. And, you know, even becoming aware of where that difficulty is with the large trucks, still needing to use the tax on the gas, what's that gonna do for the pumps? How do we do it? You know, there's a lot of questions ahead, but I support the effort and have confidence that the team will come up with the right answers. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else for final discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much, you guys. Mindy, thank you for your wonderful presentation. Nice to see you, Larry. Appreciate all your hard work you guys are doing on the state level for this. So thank you very much for your time. Now, the item of course is to receive, so all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, seeing no objections and having no further business. We will call the hearing for Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee now adjourned. Thank you, guys.
I would like to call to order the Public Safety and Human Services Committee to order. Clerk, can you please read the agenda item?
PSHS 2025-02, Communication from Councilmember Cowden requesting the presence of the Emergency Management Administrator to provide a briefing regarding the county's response to the July 29, 2025 tsunami threat with discussion of successes and weak points, including the ability to move assets such as fire trucks, evacuation routes, availability and functioning of shelters, traffic, and persistent areas of vulnerable infrastructure.
Thank you. Do, I have a motion or to?
Make a motion to move?
Aloha and good morning, El Tenucio, Emergency Management Administrator. Not sure how I get the presentation back up. Of our tsunami warning response, I do note that we are still compiling information through our partner, Hotwashes, and from our after-action review. Still compiling and will produce something more formal in the weeks ahead. Also, we will be contributing to a statewide, very comprehensive act, after-action review that is tentatively scheduled to take place in October. And they'll be calling, you know, state and counties to this event managed by Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, or HAIMA. Anyway, I'll start off with a very quick timeline of the event. But before doing that, I'll note that tsunamis are quite challenging in that they are very short notice, you know, virtually no notice events. In this case, the quake occurred and you can see how quickly, I'll show you the basic elements of the timeline, hang on. There we go. So at 1:33 PM, we had the initial tsunami watch issuance due to Kamchatka earthquake, initial moment magnitude of 8.0, but that was later elevated to 8.7. Our Emergency Operations Center immediately goes into either a full or partial activation, depending on the distance and estimated first wave arrival. So in that case, we went to a partial activation, started calling out partners, standing up core elements of the EOC getting ready. By 2:17, they had upgraded the intensity of the earthquake, and the watch was continued. And by 2:43, we had gone into a warning and elevated our status to full activation. And you can see the timeline from there, 10:38, it was downgraded from the warning to an advisory and then canceled at 8:59 AM the next morning as far as the tsunami advisory. Now, in that time, a lot of actions took place, and I will go over some of the successes and some of our challenges. And I'll try to address all the questions in the memo transmitted to me. What went well? So at the top there, I have our Emergency Operations Center, our EOC activation. Went through our normal protocol. We have a document called a Quick Reference Checklist that was developed over 10 years ago that helps guide the first staff through the door with the essential steps for, you know, certain types of events such as flash flood warning, tsunami, et cetera. So I, was a good opportunity, had the staff, and we have lots of new staff or new to position staff, had them go through that checklist and start to stand up. We regularly maintain contact information of various points of contact. So for each of our federal, state, county, and core non-governmental partners, we like to have contact information, if possible, three or four deep so we can go down the list to make sure we engage that and engage them and have success in doing so to get their support. And that list is kept quite current, so very successful in executing that. As far as the operational coordination from the get-go, our statewide coordination with the Pacific Tsunami Warning Center, Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, HAIMA, the governors, mayors, and the county Emergency Operations Centers, or EOCs, went quite well. We have a standing bridge that we put up, gave us the, you know, most current information and make sure that we have a statewide situational awareness, common operating picture, all on the same page. Likewise, that operational coordination worked well with our seasoned team. And by seasoned team, I mean not KIMA, I mean all Kauai. So our whole community team in the EOC, again, federal, state, county, non-governmental partners, and our All Hazards Incident Management Team, which is augmented by some of our reserve core positions that the council helped fund. So we could bring in some of our retirees trained in ICS and helped us execute. So that went well. Public information and warning from the initial notifications from the Pacific Tsunami Warning Center, that went pretty good. State Warning Point is a 24/7/365 operation where we have various warning officers at HAIMA who monitor various threats, products, and ensure dissemination to the county dispatch centers, the county EOCs, and state and county command staff on HAIMA's list. So they coordinated well. This was during the workday, so, you know, that might have made it easier, but Warning Point executed. Mayor's PIOs integrated immediately, worked very well. And then we even had partners such as the Civil Air Patrol report very quickly to the EOC telling us they're mission-ready to fly when we asked them to. I will note that a change in this particular tsunami warning event was that rather than each county individually doing our own siren activations and emergency alert system activations, in prior discussion statewide and post La Jaina stuff, we had coordinated and it ended up where the state warning point, so HAIMA, was doing, doing all of the alert and warning system activations. And that made it really a lot smoother for us at KIMA because otherwise I would have had to dedicate staff to the notification and warning systems and make sure we do it all at the same time. But statewide coordination and execution of that made it really easy, and I think the other counties mentioned that as well. Next, evacuation and protection is what I'm calling this area, traffic control points. So when we updated our tsunami evacuation zones, this is the basic layer, the red zone, in 2014, various partners, KPD, Public Works, DOT Transportation, KFD, and others contributed, you know, to that effort. And also with KPD as a lead, established pre-planned primary and secondary roadblock locations. Those locations have stood the test of time and they were executed quite well by our KPD team. It was helped by technology because our GIS folks were able to take that roadblock layer, and just like when we have FEMA come down for a damage assessment, they produced a clickable link that KPD could disseminate to their patrol officers and click, and they could see where the roadblock locations were supposed to be. In fact, kudos to KPD because we're, I was impressed with their execution, so much so that I asked, and I won't name names, but I asked the different officers, higher level and some chief level, what their positions were in our last tsunami warning back in 2012. One said, oh, I was a patrolman one. One, one said, I was a recruit. I said, you guys executed so well just following the plan and being familiar with it. And, you know, kudos to KPD for that. Let me see here. People, yeah. So I will have a following slide with some challenges, but I will note that ultimately we were successful with evacuations of people. Yes, there were some challenges with traffic and I'll go over that. But had this been a truly destructive tsunami, lives would have been saved because everyone really needed to be out of the evacuation zone or wanted to, did get out. Yes, we noticed a stand-up paddle border in Honolulu Bay on our drone. People walking on the beach, but those people, that was their choice. Everyone who wanted to did get out with ample time to spare. Although at times, you know, when traffic was at gridlock, might have been very nerve-wracking. Critical infrastructure, key resources. So I say balanced success, balanced in that that which could be saved for the most part was removed. We can't do much about certain types of infrastructure that's fixed in place, like the fuel, propane, storage, any wastewater systems within the evacuation zone or inundation area. But our partners with Kauai Fire Department removed critical equipment from any evacuation zones, pre-staged it in a safe area. Public Works evacuated most of their equipment. State Highways did so as well. However, some items were strategically left behind because if they were deemed to be too difficult to move or may prove to complicate the evacuation or potentially cause more traffic or block the highway if it broke down, it was deemed, no, lives are more important. So I say balanced success there. Finally, I have a tsunami refuge areas, also known as sheltering. I say short notice success. Why short notice? Again, tsunami, we had very little warning time. We had to, first of all, look at our inventory and then try to make contact with owners slash operators. Thankfully, several of our core partners had responded to the EOC, so we utilized various Department of Education facilities, Kauai Community so we utilized various Department of Education facilities, Kawai'i Community College, Parks and Recreation, and one private facility that has volunteered in the past stood up. So I have a list of them up there. You guys can look at them. So we did have some success there. We had, it was scalable. We got support from County Transportation in helping to move people. And as the event wound down and we still had visitors without a place to stay, we consolidated everyone at the Kawai'i Veterans Center and transported them there and, you know, Red Cross brought out their additional cots and we set up for the night. And people stayed there and started to get to the airport and try to leave the island the next morning. So just so you can see a little bit basic about how KIMA functions during an activation. When fully stood up, you know, we use a hybrid model combining NIM's National Incident Management System and ICS Incident Command System with embedded functions, core functions called emergency support functions. So you can see it makes some sense with fire and hazmat, search and rescue, public safety law enforcement grouped together in one branch of operations, you know. On another branch, infrastructure branch, we have transportation, public works, engineering, energy, communications, and then another branch, human community concerns, mask care, housing, human services, public health, et cetera, and the other supporting entities. So that's generally how we organize. What I don't show here is our all hazards incident management team, which provides leadership and organizes and, you know, produces the incident action plan and tends to be the ones actually running the incident. So once we stand up the EOC fully, we have the IMT engage. I'm no longer like the stereotypical Captain Kirk out there, large and in charge, giving commands. So what happens is, you know, we have them run the incident and I'm with the policy group as an agency administrator with the mayor, setting his priorities and executing accordingly. And we go in that command room, room 106. And intentional separation, although mayor and, you know, command group does walk the floor, we have to let our team focus on their tasks. Same. Challenges, areas for improvement. No matter what, we are always looking at potential areas for improvement. That's one thing about our job, there's always more to be done. Again, I want to reemphasize that tsunamis are very short to no notice events, quite challenging. Before I talk about this, I'll tell you that I just got an email notification for Hurricane Kiko. We're going to start our statewide coordination calls starting Friday. So many days out, we're tracking those things. With tsunamis, just a few hours, sometimes less if it's in-state. Anyway, challenges, areas for improvement, EOC activation. So as our staff was trying to do the call-outs, it takes time and trying to call people and, oh, one person doesn't answer. And although, you know, we do have a team of people trying to do that, you know, one of our subsequent after-action takeaways was we really should leverage some of the technology we have at our fingertips. So it does take time, but we could pre-program emergency contacts into our mass notification system and do it that way. You doesn't, you don't have that person-to-person exchange, can't answer questions, but at least we initiate a notification there. But what I told the team was better yet, it's been a while. 2012, I believe, was our last true warning event. We had some advisories since, but front-end empowerment of staff and partners. That means the people who, and organizations that should be responding, they should know on the front end and they should feel empowered to, yes, I don't need to wait for a call. This is a situation where I may or am needed in the EOC and I should report in. So that's one thing we'll be working on. It's a continuous thing. Again, a long time since we had a tsunami, but our partners generally don't change. So we'll work on doing a better job of that front-end empowerment of our partners and their personnel. Next, operational coordination. Not as critical here, but VTC means video teleconferences. So we did have statewide VTC calls. The challenge with that is they were doing them hourly and towards the end, more than hourly. So this is with the governor, mayors, emergency managers, state and county, Pacific Tsunami Warning Center. And we noted on Kawai'i, as well as my colleagues across the state, that the volume and frequency was too much. So it's taking us away from our immediate focus. Good for us to have that information, but if little to nothing has changed, might as well just say that, you know, forecast remains the same, no additional significant information, bam. And then we can go back. And we did keep the link live in room 106. So if anything, you know, really pressing came up, we could all jump on the call, but that was one thing. Another thing, yeah, our team is experienced, been through this a lot. But this is more minor, but they didn't put on their vests, which identify their function and position within our ICS structure. And with some newer people in the room, turnover over the years, new partners, it would have been better. So our team knows and they'll be putting on their vests again last time. I think mayor was the only one to put on his vest and he needs no introduction, so. Next, public information and warning. So I have up there one issue about managing the media. So what we noticed was there was information going out at times that wasn't accurate or needed to be addressed or corrected. So our PIO team did a pretty good job of monitoring, or if someone in the EOC noticed something, they'd bring it to their attention. So PIOs and mayor himself were very active in engaging the media. I really appreciate, you know, PIO team, Eldon and company said, mayor will address media so you can focus on your job. So I did not need to do any interviews, was terrific. So we could focus and go. So mayor got on radio and TV and handled that issue. We did have another thing about public information and warning where arriving passengers at LeHui Airport did not know the situation. In one case, several of them got bussed to one of our shelter locations, brought it over capacity and we had to make adjustments. But I must give a big credit to state DOT, particularly Director Sniffen because the following week, got on a call with us and his airports people, LeHui and Central Olanahu. And from their end, they will be assisting with, one, engaging incoming aircraft so they know the situation, two, providing information upon arrival, and then three, coordinating with the EOC if people need to be moved off-site. But at the same time, where feasible, they'll try to house people at the airport. Next, evacuation, protection. So traffic control points. We got several reports, calls, concerns from community and partners alike about traffic congestion on the North Shore, in the Kapaa area, as well as on the West Side in Waimea. You know, we're still doing internal assessments on that and what can be done better, but some preliminary items that we found. One, you know, we had to send assets to help with the traffic control, emphasizing evacuation from Honolulu rather than people going in, but letting some people go in who needed to go to their home to get children, pets, whatever. They also had a situation with the bridges and the traffic lights at the bridges. And so DOT realized, ooh, we left those up. So that had to be taken down. But North Shore did clear eventually. Kapaa, I think, especially Waialua area, that's a population center and that took the longest, but that eventually cleared too, as did Waimea. But one issue that did come up from a number of sources was that there were some businesses, namely gas stations within the evacuation zone that remained open and people have that tendency to want to hoard commodities, even gas at times like this when they really need to focus on getting out. So we're looking at some possible ways to rectify that. We just have to determine what is most reasonable. So possible meaning through 127A, you know, yes, the, we have some authority for voluntary evacuation in Blue Sky. And once the emergency proclamation is issued, mandatory evacuation. So we could try to use that mechanism to get businesses to shut down. Or there is one, another section, and I'll run this by Matt later, but there's another section that deals with, you know, suspension of services. So that's something I will bring up statewide because it's not like a Kawai'i-only problem and we'll see. Because there are some complications. What if the gas station is just half a mile outside of the evac zone? It's causing traffic there. So, you know, there's going to have to be some wise mechanism. You know, you surely wouldn't shut down Costco, which is really far away, right? So we'll see. You know, maybe there'll be people smarter than you can come up with a good workable solution for that issue. Critical infrastructure, key resources. So some assets were left in place. Again, for our partners with highways and public works, those are generally equipment that they deem difficult to move, might take too long, could cause worse traffic congestion. So strategically, there was determined that some items were left within the evacuation zones. Finally, I have tsunami refuge areas, sheltering. So the same items as the slide twice prior. Staffing. So we already have challenges with adequate numbers of volunteers and staffing for shelters that we've been working on. However, on a short to no notice event, that makes it even worse. Again, kudos to Department of Education, Parks and Recreation. You know, we had some Red Cross support, Kawai'i Community College, and then the Kawai'i Christian Fellowship for stepping up and providing that support there. But definitely staffing is an area we need to continue to work on and improve. And we're trying to engage additional community partners. We'll be working with our volunteer organizations, Active in Disaster. We have an active search team in Princeville area. In fact, just last week, I met with them and one hotel Honolulu Bay on possible refuge area considerations. You know, we'll do additional partner planning and communications on the front end. So we, that GIS technology I talked about. We actually have an old layer, which I'm requesting that our team update and provide the clickable link again so that facility by facility, each school, principal, vice principal, head custodian, or whatever shelter staff we send there, they can look in, they can see what rooms were pre-designated, capacities for each, and all like that. We have the technology. We just have to get that platform set up. And if they can do it for FEMA damage assessments, which we successfully done multiple times before, if we can do it for traffic control points, we can surely do it for refuge areas. So that's a low-hanging fruit, just going to take time for our team to do that. And that there is leveraging the GIS technology, the last item I have up there. Now, I did want to add some other key takeaways. And you've heard me say this before, and I've, we've done this when we do public outreach, but awareness, preparedness, and resilience, it's everyone's kuliana. Again, it starts with each and every one of us as individuals, our ohana, our respective organizations that we belong to, be it work, personal, faith base, what have you. Very important that the whole community knows the threats for, that exist in all of the areas we live, work, and frequent. In particular, for the tsunami threat, I have some links up there, but the tsunami evacuation zones, those are readily available interactive tool. We have downloadable ones on the KIMA website. People who still have phone directories or phone books, we have them printed in there. But those should be known ahead of time, not when the tsunami warning is issued. It's surprising how many people, general public, businesses alike, just don't know that. Understandably, visitors might not do that research ahead of time. But information is out there. We have a quite comprehensive highway and roadway signage on the main highways and our primary county feeder roads around the island of entering and leaving tsunami evacuation zones and some directional signs as well. So those two, people drive by them every day and they don't really realize where the zones are. But that front-end awareness is extremely important. Similarly, you know, I have just a couple more links there having to do with other flooding type risks. You know, flood hazard assessment tool, fhat.hawaii.gov and dam inventory, which includes evacuation zones by DLNR. So just some examples, tsunami and couple flood-related of resources where people on the front end should be educating themselves. Next, people need to stay informed, preferably via multiple means. Don't just rely on cellphone notifications. Most powerful, sure. But, you know, if you disable your emergency alerts, you might not get them. If you get a private app that does notifications, great. But if it's on the same device, that's, you know, a single point of failure. So you might want to have one of those radios at home that activates with the EAS signal. You might want to have, you know, NOAA Weather Radio or have multiple members of your family also subscribe so that you do have more than one means of emergency notification. The issue with the notifications is that, yeah, many people may not have heard anything until the actual warning was issued or the sirens go off. And at that point, there's a mad rush to evacuate. And, you know, sooner you know, the better. So I'll tie this in with a request from some of our partners. We've had some core partners in the EOC say, I'd like a KIMA badge so I can get past the roadblock. And I said, you know, it's not our practice to issue that. On a case-by-case basis for a critical partner, you call into the EOC and we'll tell the police, okay, this person is coming with this vehicle, maybe we can let them through. However, any important organization, be it if you report to the EOC or you're a surgeon or you're a pilot or you're security somewhere, any important individual organization should have very early awareness. So upon issuance of the watch, and watch doesn't have all the bells and whistles, sirens don't go off, right? The TV and the radios will go off. We don't send mass messages to the cellphones for our watch. But at that point, if you're important enough, you should be taking action. And it takes us a few hours to set up the roadblocks. So it shouldn't be where now you're stuck at the roadblock two and a half hours later. So, you know, just goes to show that, you know, stay alert through multiple means. Next, we recommend that everyone, so individuals, families, organizations have a plan to ensure your readiness, you know, and it should be for various hazards. Within that plan, address your front-end preparedness in potential for evacuation or whether or not you can shelter in place, and then communication within your organization or family, very important. So good wake-up call this tsunami warning event. And finally, we always say this for multiple hazard types, but have that 14-day emergency kit and a portable go kit if you need to leave your home. In the case of a tsunami, you know, not everyone may realize, but it was a truly destructive tsunami and all of our ports are impacted. It may take a long time to restore the normal flow of commerce. Thank goodness for Kawai'i, our airport, LeHui, is the only one, non-military one, because Wheeler is high, but only non-military one that is out of even the extreme tsunami evacuation zone. So that's good for us, but it can also be a challenge for us because all aircraft coming in, low on fuel, may be redirected here in the case of an extreme tsunami. But at least we would have that port functioning so supplies could come in and out as long as our fuel reserves hold. But again, awareness, preparedness, resilience starts with each and every one of us. It's all of our kuliana. Except for perhaps those who cannot care for themselves, then we do our best to take care. But that's it. Very brief presentation at this time, but I'm open to any questions.
Eldon, thank you for the presentation. Before my question, I did want to say, you know, Hurricane Kiko is out there and, you know, the 14-day supply, people should start stocking up. I noticed the media, the TV media. I noticed the media, the TV media, in my opinion, is downplaying this and saying, oh, it's still far away and oh, but, but we know that the path and, and anything can happen. So for the people out there, go just get your 14 days supply. Couple of questions, you know, on the roadblocks you mentioned, how long before the event, the time of estimated time of event do we set up the roadblocks?
So roadblocks, we shoot for, you know, our original intent was try to get them in place at least two hours before. But in all honesty, I don't have a timeline of when each was established. It varies. It depends where we can get the officers, where we can get the, you know, the barricades and things like that. So it varies by location. And so I could put together a more comprehensive list of what was established.
Yeah, I think just to manage the traffic, I think that was the biggest concern, you know, obviously, if the, if the tsunami did hit, then, you know, the concerns would go away. I had received a few calls from, and a few means more than three, where people were stuck at a, at a roadblock. And I'll use LA LA Shopping Center as an example because like that one, I got two calls from just from LA LA. And these people lived in Hanapepe Heights, hours from the event. We were hours away from the event and they were not allowed to go up to Hanapepe Heights. They were directed to go back to LA LA Shopping Center and wait there. Number two, two things. Number one, Hanapepe Heights is much safer. It's, it's up high. These people need to get home with their families. And then the second part of that is when the all clear comes, you just have way more vehicles down at LA LA Shopping Center than you need to, than you should have. Because, you know, the discretion to allow someone to go through if the tsunami event not supposed to happen for three hours and they're just trying to get home. So is that something that you guys can discuss and possibly, you know, I mean, if they're trying to get home, let them go home. And not, and especially, I can see, you know, half hour out, 45 minutes out of the tsunami, then hey, nobody moves. But when you have that much lead time and someone just wants to get home, shouldn't that, shouldn't they be allowed to, to go in?
So, Councilor Chair, that's something we can address. You know, you know, I did say that we will have some follow up discussions on the traffic control points and, you know, KPD and others will be looking at how that functions. So something we'll bring up.
And then the other real quick, and I was actually going to send this across, but I'll let you know right now, the, I got yesterday, Saturday, we're at ILWU event, one of the Kupuna, they said the Keikaha sirens did not go off. Are we, are we, do we have a report on how many sirens did not go off during this last event?
So as far as the last event, that'll take some research for us to go and look at. But based, we did do a siren test on Tuesday of this week. So we have that report already. And then Haima, who owns and maintains the sirens, we use them, but Haima owns and maintains them. They have a siren dashboard, interactive tool that people can go and look at the siren status. So I can provide you that link, but I can also give you a report on what was working at least for this last test.
Well, what was it, where wasn't working this last test?
Where wasn't?
Yeah, what, what sirens?
So I don't have, because we have so many sirens, I don't know exactly which ones were, weren't working, but I can pull that for you and provide it.
Thank you.
Regarding those sirens, we tested every first of the month too, right? And so they have a list on the first of the month already.
Yeah, so we just tested it on the first workday of this month. So this, that would be yesterday. So we have that list compiled and I can provide that to your staff if you want to see the performance year to date and yesterday's test.
Yeah, and I think more importantly, the public should be notified because they need to know if they live in that area. That woman told me that sirens haven't been working for a long time.
So there are some areas where the sirens have not been working for a while. We did have a meeting last week with Haima about their status. You know, they have challenges. They have two siren texts for the whole state. And they have various contracts in place for major repairs or replacement or movement of some of our sirens. So they do, there are known challenges. But that is even more so while, why I emphasize that people need more than one means of notification. Sirens, although they seem very dramatic, they are not our most powerful tool. You know, wireless emergency alerts and our county mass notification system gets to a lot more people than just the sirens. But sirens are a useful tool in our quiver, yeah?
Yeah, and, and that Kupuna that was talking to me, she's not on the internet. She's not on TikToks or YouTube. So, you know, I, I, and I'll bring this up with the state because I think it's kind of, I think it's kind of offensive almost that they would allow sirens and, and use the lack of resources as an excuse. I think that is not a valid excuse because you, that to me is a very important and vital part of our emergency notification system. I mean, that's kind of what we need. So, yeah, if you can get us that list ASAP and then we'll work with the state to get those things fixed. That's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, we can transmit it.
Councilmember Holland?
And just following up on that as well, similarly, Wainihua did not report a siren also yesterday for the first of the month trial. So I don't know, but definitely, definitely flagging that for you as well. I agree that we have very powerful ways to access the, the information, but especially on the beaches and people might not have their phone and just all of that, especially in deep North Shore. I think it's super important that the siren does work. So yeah, just want to bring that up as well.
Councilmember Bullison?
Thank you again, this amazing coordination. Thank you to the whole team. The last part of your presentation, I think probably for me is the most important part. Is there training available for the public on, on all the steps aside from the resources on your website and other partners?
Yeah, so training for the general public, you know, we normally would refer them to web resources. I could try to put together a list of possible resources, but in all honesty, it, it will be quite limited unless they belong to some organization, say like the Red Cross, Team Rubicon, Civil War Patrol and things like that, then, you know, they would have more internal resources. But KIMA, to the extent that we can, we do provide community outreach as well. We'll go to any kind of preparedness events, fairs, on invitation. We've sent staff to do all hazards awareness and preparedness presentations at community based organizations, faith based organizations, even some businesses. So those are available.
Just a follow up on that, so by request, do they send an email to?
KIMA@kauai.gov, our generic email, and that's monitored by multiple staff. And we do have our dedicated staff for outreach.
Hey, Councilmember Carvalho?
Great presentation, Eldon.
Push your button.
I just wanted to follow up on the, thought of this numerous times, but especially in this kind of situation, traffic and cars, and that happened recently, right? But the plan for the bypass roads, you know, the emergency bypass roads, you know, behind the prison and then going up Alka so that people can actually traverse, is that still being talked about?
That's still in discussion. In fact, I got a report that Public Works is doing some clearing today of some roadways. But that's going to be a long and complex process because of permissions and access and things like that. But definitely, and our GIS team too is working on, you know, mapping out possible alternate routes.
So it is on the agenda? I mean, he's like talking.
Yeah, it's some, it's, it's, it's an issue that's ongoing.
Just following up on that, so i- is that back route behind K triple C out of the tsunami area? Do you know of that?
Yeah, so there will be, I'm looking up because I'm trying to remember the zone in the area. There are areas that are out of it, like the prison itself is out, but they might have some minor intrusion around there. I'd have to double check, but I think a normal tsunami, it's okay, maybe extreme, not so. The issue will be down by the bridge at the Waialua River because that's going to be all in the zone, yeah.
You're saying that K triple C is outside of the tsunami zone?
Yep. It's in the extreme tsunami zone, so that 9.2 plus greater eruption event. But for a normal tsunami, it's not in the evacuation zone.
Interesting. Vice Chair Koalitie?
I might have missed when you talk about it, but piggybacking on what Councilmember Bullison was asking about with regards to training. So you work closely with fire, right? And when you go out into public, community events and all that, you also work closely with the Red Cross. And then so what about the CERT program? Is that posted on your website so people know who are the group of people maybe in their?
I'd have to.
Community that is leading the efforts?
Yeah, so right now, our only active CERT organization is Princeville via North Shore Give, Melet Garsis and Company. We met with them recently. They are looking to be, I mean, they're, they're doing pretty good, self-sustained, but they're looking for additional support and trying to expand. And they're even using KFD or retired KFD trainers for that effort. KIMA has trained hundreds of volunteers on the island in the CERT program. Part of the challenge has been getting these trained people. And so we did send some staff to attend one of their recent functions just to see what that's all about. But there most definitely is a role.
Did we have any problems in that or where the hotels and whatnot, like what do they do? They just stay in their hotel or what, what is the, if you're in a low lying hotel, what's the strategy?
Yeah, so it, it depends based on the hotel. Each has their own procedure or plan in place. We did have liaison in the EOC, Sukano Ho responded and was trying to help us interface. But we did have a few challenges with some of the hotels where they may have had, you know, hotel industry have a lot of turnover too. So since their plan was written or, you know, since our last meeting with them, perhaps someone knew has come in and they're not sure. So we did have an instance where hotels had sent people to a facility that we weren't operating or not using. So then they had to be redirected. Or, you know, you have times when a hotel might send them just to a county park, which is their thing, it's fine, but it's not the ideal location. But we're going to do, we're, we're already intending to try to reengage them on a wider scale, like meet with the GMs and their security directors or officers. And something along the lines of what we used to do every year pre-COVID. So that's a definite area that we've identified and we want to engage. The issue will be though, that there are non-traditional lodging, so the Airbnbs and what have you. And we had some questions and concerns come from those as far as information on preparedness and evacuation and having emergency supplies there. So that too is another area that we want to work on.
Yeah, I would think there'd be quite a bit of difference between hotels and vacation rentals, which Airbnb's would fall under. So that would take a, a different kind of strategy. It takes more care. Is there pre-programmed mass notification to all the hotels, like when we're in a watch phase so that they, they start to have early engagement? Or are they good at it regardless? They're, they're self volunteering?
So I can't speak for each hotel and their internal protocol, but just like my general message to everyone, awareness, multiple means of notification for an entity such as a hotel, such as a hotel, extremely important. Because with hotels, it's not unlike our police and fire and KIMA where you better be ready at home or take care of things really fast because you got to report to work. Like their workers probably want to go home, so we know that that gives them challenges in operating. So I think it behooves them to have the earliest possible notification.
So that's what I'm wondering, when you spoke about having pre-programmed mass notification for your, your team, maybe that might be another piece to think about putting on a, a big punch list that says, you know, we have a tsunami watch, you know, we had, you know, it's not like a hurricane, right? As you're saying, it's immediate. So if we have that, that might be helpful.
What I like to do with situations like that, Councilmember Calladen, is we let our liaison know, so Kauai Visitors Bureau as an example, and they disseminate through a large list and we don't have to maintain the list ourselves because it's.
Okay, so that, that, that's a good one. And then could you just very briefly describe a roadblock strategy for me, like in a low lighting area like Kaalia or along the, at least in Keikaha, they can go inward, but Kaalia, they barely can. Waialua, right in that area near the river, people get all backed up. How do, what is the strategy or the mindset when there's a roadblock? You just decide, okay, we're out of time, not going to go down Kaalia, period?
So my recollection from when the roadblock layer or strategy was developed and put on a map is that, again, KPD was the lead entity, but we didn't include KFD, Public Works, highways. They looked at logical areas, not right on the border of the evacuation zone, but far enough away that provided one, some buffer and possible area for turnarounds. Because at some places, it would be very difficult to do that. You know, that's why I believe one of the roadblock locations on Ala Kinoiki is way up and out of the zone because that's where they felt was easier to turn people around at that time. But we are, again, planning to look at and reevaluate those. So strategy at the time was where can we get the most effect of regulating access and egress with the least possible staffing? Because the resources on short notice just aren't there to deploy quickly.
And I just want to piggyback on a comment that a handful of the other council members made, which is the importance of sirens, like that's not even listed on this public information and warning page, or that's the challenges on the what went well. I would tell you that the sirens went well in Kilauea, we were up high, but I'm in the grocery store line, whatever, and you just see the change and the look on people's faces. They hear the sirens in high ground, nobody was panicking at all. But it, big line, great day for the grocery store, by the way. But you hear those sirens and it gives it a whole different sense of urgency. We get so used to different things on our cell phones. So I just want to say like Hanalei needs their siren waking, there's, Princeville's never had a siren. I've, I've brought this up a number of times to you, though I understand it's Haima, not KIMA, but we need to really push.
And I can tell you, based on last week's meeting with Haima, they are well on their way for sirens in the Princeville area.
And you, and I want to say Waialua.
I think those are scheduled already in the next year or two.
Okay, and Waialua, such a flood plain right there. Having it over in Kapaa is not the same.
Kapaa, they are planning one at the fire station.
Yeah.
And they're looking for an alternate location for the one that used to be at the wastewater pump station that got damaged by a vehicle.
Okay, any, okay.
This is just in follow up to Councilmember Calladen's question on the traffic. Like when I think about Kauai, like the North Shore for sure, I don't feel like there's a lot of areas for people to retreat on. So like, that's very critical as far as, A, once Hanalei Bridge gets shut down, then we got to let everybody else know that maybe they're slow, maybe they didn't know what to do. Where's the next areas that they have to go? So I'm not sure how that went. And if there's like, A, an hour before the tsunami comes, Hanalei Bridge has to get shut down, anybody that didn't make it there goes to this next area or what? But I feel like when you look at retreat, that area, you're kind of stuck. There's like very minimal areas where you can retreat, retreat to high ground.
No, that's a good point. In this event, you know, the North Shore did clear with ample time. However, you know, we do know some safe locations that, you know, people could go to. In fact, Hanalei School, elementary school, they have a drill in which they practice locally generated tsunami evacuation. They go up to the old Chinese cemetery. And that is out of both the normal and extreme tsunami evacuation zones.
I think that's a typical of the Japanese cemetery.
Yeah, apologies. Anyway, Limahuli Gardens voluntarily opened up and they let several people stay up there. That, that too is out of the tsunami evacuation zone and even the extreme zone. And you have upper, upper reaches of Powerhouse Road and what have you.
So I have a follow up on Hanalei. If we didn't have six hours, like this, this one, we had quite a bit of warning. If we had two hours or God forbid that. If we had two hours or God forbid that earthquake was on the Big Island, we just have, you know, less than an hour. Is there any thought of putting both lanes, um, up towards Princeville? Like, you know, you don't let people come down anymore, like after a certain point. Like if you put both lanes going up, I know we still have the narrow bridge, but you could probably evacuate faster if we opened both lanes.
So by our quick, um, quick estimate and assessment of this event, had it been a, a Lucian's event, so hour less, uh, we would have still been successful in evacuations. And this is like, uh, peak tourism, uh, daytime hours, everyone's out, businesses are open. I think the only variable that wasn't in place was we didn't have, uh, school in session. Uh, but even with the schools, they have a plan for evacuation. I think the scenario that would challenge us most, uh, is not distant tsunami, but Big Island-generated. Where depending on the location, it could be less than an hour, you know, forty-five minutes or so before first wave arrival. Uh, and that, we will do our absolute best, uh, to evacuate people out, but, uh, it would be a challenge. Because with any, the amount of resources available on very short notice, actually no notice like that, uh, with forty-five minutes or so, uh, extremely difficult, Councilmember. Um, we could, as part of this discussion of the roadblock strategy, I'll make a mental note to bring that up as discussion. What would we do with an extremely short notice event, uh, locally generated tsunami?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um, thank you. Is there any, uh, public testimony? Uh, uh, Makala and then Lonnie?
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's why we like you.
Yeah. For good or ill. Aloha.
Aloha.
I'm Makala Komuana and I'm appearing today as the Executive Director of the Hanalei Watershed Hui. Um, we have developed the Hanalei to Haiana Community Disaster Resilience Plan and plan worked once again. Um, people do remember their, um, their jobs. There are certain, um, administrative jobs that we have, mostly communication, some traffic stuff, and some creative on-the-spot kind of things because we know the people and we know the place. And place-based, these place-based plans really are effective. They, they, they save lives every single time. Um, and we do and did communicate back and forth with the administration and with KIMA when something wasn't working. We, we wanted the, um, the block coming down from Princeville to occur a little sooner. Um, and we'll work on that. We are currently seeking, not from you guys, um, funding to update this plan. It's been a few years, um, and we will facilitate that. So Hanalei Watershed Hui with Dr. Sarah Henley Shepherd, who has done it for the community for years. We continue to ask her to help us because she has established the trust of the community and she knows what she's doing. Um, she does this work internationally. Um, she, um, is more than willing to come back and has been communicating with us um, about some of the glitches that we identified. Um, I just wanna put a little place-based, um, info to this, um, to this report today. Um, you know those mobile toilets at Black Pot that were supposed to move? They stayed right there. Now, I don't particularly care to have them on the road, blocking the road and being a problem, but that was part of the FEMA funding, that they be movable and that they move. Um, and they didn't. Um, if we decided that they're not gonna, that's fine, that's another decision to be made. But, um, as far as I understood, the last FEMA funding either required ADA access, which meant my wheelchair would go, you know, zipping down from twenty feet up. Um, so that was the solution, don't you dare. Um, our failure in Hanalei was state, not county, not KPD, not the administration. Those were all very well coordinated. There were two boats left in Hanalei Bay and they belong to the state. And that's not okay, and they had no way to take them out. We have suggestions and we are planning a tabletop exercise. May I continue?
Um, you can come. Well, we'll, you come, uh, um, after him, but I have a, a clarifying question.
Oh, good, help me out here.
Or, or you can bring it in your second piece. Do you, do you interface with Hanalei Initiative? Is that part of the, the group? So maybe in your second piece.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So when in your second piece?
Before they were even the Hanalei Initiative.
Because I'm thinking about, uh, Kalala. But so let's let
It was a job well done.
We'll let Lonnie Psychos and we'll get the other
I have a clarifying.
Okay.
Can you just repeat what the plan was that you guys worked on, the Hanalei Watershed Hui?
It's the Hanalei to Haiana Community Disaster Resilience Plan.
Disaster Resilience.
And it's on our website and it's comprehensive. And it includes a command structure, a communication structure, a response structure, and we have established ten zones, uh, for communications. Um, it, it's, it's extensive and we have two trailers that, um, are not for sleeping in. They are command stations with, um, communications and, um, power.
Perfect, I think it's a good example maybe for other communities.
Absolutely. Hanapepe has, um, used, utilized a FEMA program that's a little bit similar. Ours was completely community-initiated, therefore is quite unique to our situation because we see our situation as unique.
So you can share more of that in your second round?
Okay.
I'd sit close, okay.
May I, may I please sit closer?
Lonnie Psychos is next.
For the record, Lonnie Psychos. Uh, first, I'd like to really thank the, uh, Emergency Response Team from here on Kauai, the administration, speakers, everybody. Uh, personally, a- as someone who, when I was in the Merchant Marine, oftentimes part of my duties were, uh, loss prevention and dealing with whatever disaster happened at the time, whether it's a fire, whether it's sinking, people get sick. And so I realize how difficult it is to pre-plan in advance for everything that could happen. Because you don't know everything that could happen until it actually does. So tip of the hat for everything that they got right in this. Uh, one of the reasons I, I came today was I wanted to address the fact that I think the County Council needs to put our state legislators' feet in the fire and burn them. Because the whole problem with sirens, and this goes back decades. This goes back for as long as I can remember there being sirens and it didn't matter what island I was on. The sirens don't work in locations. Some places don't have sirens for years. And the entire problem is because the state legislature doesn't properly fund the program. A- as we were told statewide, we only have two people that can work on the sirens. And so the state legislature needs to come up with the money to make the siren system function. And I wanna thank Mel there. I'm like old school, I don't carry my cellphone with me everywhere I go. I don't wanna break it, I don't wanna lose it, and I didn't grow up on social media. So my cellphone, I use as a telephone, right? It's not my, you know, one-off communications with everybody on the planet. I just use it as a cellphone. I rely on, uh, the siren that's a hundred yards from my house at the park. And so my siren has always worked, I'm very grateful for that. But I'd be upset if I had a siren that didn't work because that is in fact the ultimate, uh, warning to me that I need to pay attention to my environment. I'm about to run out of time. Uh, one of the things that might need another, uh, agenda item for is how the public should actually be preparing themselves. So for instance, it's unlikely not Willie Willie Harbor will get totally wiped out. The, uh, that berm with the thing that looked like Jack's, I'll come back.
Um, Chair, it's, it's ten thirty, do we need to take a caption break or can we run a little longer?
I would have more than, how many more, how many more people are willing to testify?
Who, who else wants to testify? Okay, Makala's coming back a second time.
Probably a second.
Pardon me?
I think Lonnie a second.
I would take the, I would take the, the caption break.
You'd take the caption break? Okay.
Because you still got discussion as well.
Yes, okay. It's, um, our caption break is the person who types the things up. So, um, we'll call a recess for ten minutes. Bang the little gavel. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I believe, is anybody else wanting to testify for the first time? All right, okay, Randy?
Aloha and good morning, Randy Francisco, Hanapi Economic Alliance Vice President and President of West Coast Business Professional Association. Just a cou- couple of comments. I wanted to acknowledge the leadership and the teamwork of everyone involved in the, um, situation that occurred and really tested our capacity to work together as a community. On that note, I just wanted to express some suggestions for the west side. Kudos to the east side. We all have stuff to learn from each other. And the one thing that I did want to comment was, as I was returning a few teachers on the cultural exchange program as far as to Keikaha, I couldn't help notice as I looked at my clock at 12:30, 8:00 a.m., at the junction where the traffic light is, I couldn't but help see a parade of vehicles coming down Waimea Canyon. And all these tailgaters, they didn't go to the nearest interior area. They hit the hills, like Hanapi Heights, Waimea Canyon. And it occurred to me as I was talking to some people later on, parts of the canyon area does not have access to internet. So, in the future, for consideration, perhaps, that might be a new area to consider as hundreds of westsiders high-tailed their way up to the hills. Secondly, I really do feel not only are there lessons learned, but to consider outside of the box, to consider connecting with the Japanese council. As Japan has a topography that always has its share of floods and natural disasters, they have a high eco-architecture system designed to do emergency management. And I bring that up because if we're not thinking about AI, now is the time. What's to prohibit a foreign country from hacking our emergency management communication system? If we're not on the ball, we're behind it because it caused, it could cause lives. And so, I just want to make that as a suggestion, but more importantly, um, to express gratitude because it takes leadership, it takes community, but also it takes communication. And the right amount of commu- communication will never be perfect, but there's always room to improve, as the Director has stated. So, mahalo for all the good work.
I have a clarifying question. Were people tailgating up the hill or down the hill?
They were coming down the hill.
Because they didn't know?
Uh, no, they were made aware. So, when the call about the evacuation orders were put out, you know, I didn't see all of that, but what I wanted to say is that is an area, as you're coming down that Waimea Canyon road, that people were initially high-tailing it up after the evacuation order was completed, then they were coming back down the hill. And the fact that you have hundreds of cars, and if you know the terrain and the road itself, it would be amazing to learn that no one rear-ended their neighbor's vehicle. So, just a comment on that area because I think for westsiders, they need to get out of the plane zone, which we know the stretch is also Keikaha to Waimea. And other potential partners would be, of course, the base, which I know is an active partner, but to also consider the Keikaha Ag Association.
Okay, thank you. Any other first-time testifiers? Second-time Makalala Ka'alawana?
I want to just repeat that we are going to do a full debrief. What I've learned, the county calls a hot wash, which I still need a translation for. Seems an odd term. And one entity that we will include without option is DLNR. DLNR was not present in the EOC during this incident. DLNR was our only challenges on the North Shore. Ni Mahuli did an amazing job. Aha La Initiative did an amazing job. The citizens did their jobs. They followed what they knew to do and get people out. But DLNR didn't get its two votes out of the bay. And as we were evacuating people from Ha'ana, Joel individually and a DOT employee at the Waikoko Light that still remained red and green, were pushing people out, 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 out. And contra flow to that came two do-kare trucks, code three, going the wrong way. And I called them the next morning and explained what had happened. They were very unhappy with me. We were, we had orders to evacuate. I said, "The cars were all evacuating. They were all coming toward you. What were you doing? You were the problem." So, we can resolve that by sitting down together at a roundtable and, and we will do that. And I know Elton supports that. Elton has always shown up. I do want to thank particularly the county administration. The mayor individually checked on us on the North Shore several times, specifically. How many people you have, you okay, calling Ni Mahuli? You guys need, you know, whatever. That's important. And they were good. They didn't need any extra help, but it's nice to know that people are paying attention to you and at least asking of other services. I want to also just note that all these things that we need, that we love, the Civil Air Patrol, the sirens, that, all of that, it sets a certain tone of panic. You know, and I'm not saying we shouldn't use them, I'm just saying we need to be aware that when Civil Air Patrol is, is constantly flying overhead low with just the siren screaming, it makes people behave strangely sometimes. So, a little psych training would go a long way, I think, for some, for some of our responders. And I appreciate this opportunity for this catch-up, and we will be back after we do our roundtable. It'll be some months because we'll wait for Ha'ima to do theirs. Mahalo.
Thank you. Mr. Psychos?
For the record, Lonnie Psychos, my thanks again to the presenters and the excellent presentation that they made. But I came up to ask the council to create an agenda item for the future and to give the emergency response time to prepare for this. And so, we're told that we should have a 14-day supply of food and water and whatever. But my question is, if we have a major catastrophic event, and so like I witnessed Aniki, I wasn't on Kauai, I got here two days later. If the island is devastated, what happens on day 15? And so, that's what the public needs to know. Like, I, Mel and I live close to each other. If the bridge in Waialua gets wiped out, we're stuck. We know my airport, airport's in Lihue. It's an airport on the North Shore that could be reopened, but unlikely the highway's going to be open between the airport on the North Shore and Kapaa. And so, like, I've seen all kinds of things. I know the military has fuel bladders that you can tow with a helicopter or with a boat. And so, you can pull 10,000 gallons of fuel up on the beach, no problem. But you have to have all this stuff, you know, prepared in advance. I know that Mattson and the military have all kinds of plans, but the public's not really aware of any of the details. And if you really want the public to be prepared and to address the issue that when the siren goes off and the airplane flies, people freak out, people are freaking out because they know they're not prepared. And so, the question from me is, how do we get the public to understand what it is that they need to get prepared for? And so, as an example, when the tsunami happened in Japan and arrived at Kauai, we had, I think, a foot and a half wave. That tsunami also arrived at 15 minutes before low tide and was a very low tide. And so, what would have happened if that exact same wave had arrived 15 minutes before high tide? And most of the fuel stored on this island is near sea level. I don't know of any other high-altitude tanks except the ones at the airport, and they primarily would have aviation fuel, not gasoline and diesel. So, the public would benefit by having a presentation of post-apocalyptic event, tsunami, hurricane, you know, what's going to happen on day 15, day 20, day 30? Thank you.
Okay, members, discussion? Councilmember Kanashiro?
I just want to thank Elton. I think it was a job well done. You know, although it was a non-event, I think it was really important that we pulled the trigger, which I know is not an easy thing to do, to pull the trigger and say, you know, get out of, get it, out of, evacuate, you know, stay at home, do all this stuff. But I think it was, it was definitely the right thing to do. It was a good exercise. Um, yeah, again, to see how everything works out. I, I know Lihue town was kind of a mess because I think everybody was trying to grab gas. It's a safe area, but traffic was a mess because everyone was trying to grab gas at that time. Just before, um, the first wave hit or was it anticipated to hit, I think Lihue, Lihue was a ghost town. As far as keeping stores open during this time, yeah, it might be a little difficult because I know employers want to get their employees home also to prep. But, um, I think, you know, for the most part, it was, it was a good exercise at the end of the day, and it was necessary, you know? If we got hit with something bad, it was very important that we got everybody where they were. So, I just want to say thank you. I would like to see us get our sirens back working. I don't think it would be any surprise that the sirens not working because they do it every month anyways, so they should know already what sirens aren't working. But other than that, you know, I think you guys did a great job and you guys are really forward-thinking, you know, when it comes to these type of things. You know, there's like hundreds of, like, different, um, alternatives that can happen and where people need to be, and you guys do a really good job of like broad-spectruming, getting everything pretty much organized. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Anyone else? Chair Reposo?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Elton. Again, you know, I was lucky enough to be in EOC during the event. That was the first time I'd ever been in the EOC for any event. And I, I got to tell you, I was totally impressed, and I think I've said it enough times, but I'll say it again. You know, the organization, the collaboration, the fact that everybody, I'm kind of surprised DLNR wasn't in there. I didn't even notice that until Makalala brought that up, but they need to be in there. But aside from that, the way that, and I guess you've had a lot of practice, Elton, over the years, and while you might say you're not the captain of the ship, you're still the leader in that room. That's what I observed from an outsider. And listening to the statewide calls and comparing our, uh, actions with the other islands, I'd say we are way ahead of the game in the state, and thank you, Elton, for that. The collaboration, you know, the, the call takers, and I think for people to really appreciate what goes on in there, that room is full, number one, and they have call takers that take in calls from the community, and then it gets routed directly to the agency that is tasked with that function so that there's no more punting calls. It goes where it needs to go and it gets resolved, and I saw that firsthand. There are things that, you know, what I call the limiting factors, which, the roads, you know, we only have so many roads and so many lanes of travel, so we got to make sure we are cognizant of that. Mr. Cavalier brought up the emergency access. I think we really got to start looking into opening those up during, during emergencies and disasters. Um, I know Makalala shared- I know Makala shared about the CAP and the, and the sirens, but I, I will guarantee you that if that was not a, if that was a true event, I don't think that comment would, would work today. I mean, because, because it resulted in a, in a, some devastation, I think people would appreciate the CAP and the, and the sirens. But because it didn't, I think it's like, wow, do we really have to do that? Well, we got to look at what if it happens? If it's a hurricane, we all know, most of us in here was here for Aniki. And when that thing passed, it, we were left with nothing. And I don't think that comment would, would hold true if, in fact, the event had actually occurred. But I appreciate the comment, and I agree. I mean, it could freak you out when you see that airplane flying and the siren blasting. And CAP was in, in EOC as well. It's crazy. Every, every agency was there. And then the 14-day supply, you know, someone raised this and says, "Mel, you know how much it costs to, to go get 14 days' worth of food and water?" Yes, I do, because I shop, my, my wife shops as well. The, the idea is not to go get your 14-day supply when the sirens go off. That, that's too late, right? The idea is to incrementally buy that extra couple of cans of food and so that over time you create this 14-day. It's never intended to be when the warning or the watch goes out, okay, now go get your 14 days of food. No. Everyone should have 14 days' worth of supplies now with no threat. So, that, that is the message. And then the other thing, I think, Elton, the only other, which I, I thought the, the PIOs in that room, I mean, they were, they were scrambling. They were running all over the place trying to get information for the next, I guess it was every hour they were putting something out. I don't know if it's possible, but to, to be able to broadcast live, like have, have one of the radio stations actually in EOC or at, you know, with a direct link so that you could tune into one radio station and just listen to the updates as they happen, kind of like what the news channels did. It was, after a while, it gets boring, you know, you stop watching because they're repeating themselves, because they don't have content, because you don't, you don't have buoys between Midway and Kauai. So, after Midway, it's just wait now, wait. And everybody was losing their minds, like, oh, my God. But just, just keeping the, the communities, I think, going back to what Makala was saying, where you get that, that sense of panic, somehow keep them informed in a comfortable manner where they're not panicking, even if they hear a siren or even if they hear the CAP. But I, I just wanted to overall say, for the people of Kauai, our EOC is incredible. I mean, it is just probably the best functioning agency at the time of disaster than any other on this island and probably in the state. So, kudos to you, Elton, and your team. Years of practice, years of training. Man, it was, it was, it was, it was something to see. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bulisun?
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilmember Cowden for putting this on the agenda and the council members for allowing this briefing. Thank you, Elton, for the briefing. When I got the first notice, my family and I were in Milwaukee for a conference, my son and my wife. And she was presenting mid-presentation. And I take these super serious because I love watching zombie movies and I'm a serial prepper. Like, I love it. It's like one of my favorite hobbies, which is a weird thing to announce to the community. But, so fun thing to see this whole, how, how we're organizing. It's just, it, it impresses me in, in so many ways to see how our organization and teams are, are constantly adapting and becoming better each scenario and in between. Because the, the most important is to prep during, before something happens, not, not when it happens. On the plane ride back home, you know, first thing, what I got inspired to do was to watch another crazy scenario. So, if you guys haven't watched invasions, you know, aliens invading, that's a good time to get you ready to prep. And it made me realize, oh, man, I'm missing some scenarios in my, my prepping. We got tsunami down, we got the other stuff down, but, you know, we don't have the alien prep down. So, let's get the alien prep down. So, the first Wednesday, normally Wednesdays I do date nights with my wife. And so, our date night consisted of checking every single emergency bag, going through our emergency prep list, contacting all our, our family, making sure everyone knows evacuation routes, checking our radios, checking our, our walkie-talks. She loved the date. She had so much fun on this date. She said she'd never want to do this date again. And so, the reason why I share this, because some may be watching and see, oh, fantastic, our team is doing great. I, I, I don't really have to do much. That is, that is the least, that should be on the bottom of your thought process. You should be a fun prepper like myself because it's really fun. My wife really enjoys it. Will probably never have a date again. But it really allows you to know kind of the gaps if you, if you get into the scenario and it, and the likelihood that we're in a, we're in a place in time where these emergencies are going to be more regular, unfortunately. And so, it's really important for us. That's why I'm really looking towards our, our administration and this, this body to see how we can empower our community to take the prepping more serious and get more training in. Because in every, every zombie movie, you never see the emergency response. You don't hear the sirens. You're with your family and it's you and yourself by yourself figuring this stuff out. If you got nothing ready, you're not ready for what's coming. And so, that was like the, I, I like to just elevate my, my scarcity mindset and get that pumped. So, if you're all wanting to get ready, watch invasions and then maybe talk to me about prepping. But thank you again, Councilmember Cowden, for putting this on. It's great.
Councilmember Cavallo and then Councilmember Holland.
Again, thank you, mahalo, Elton, for your presentation, very detailed. And I just wanted to, without repeating, but, you know, we're an island setting. We're not, we can't just jump in our car and drive to another state, you know, how that happens. So, we're so unique in a way. We're very special, and we got to prepare ourselves in a way that really going to help us to maintain and move forward. And the connections, the relationships, the solid communication going back and forth at all different levels is very important, securing whatever we can before the disaster hits. But at the same time, from Makai to Ma'aka and Ma'aka to Makai, you know, we got to make sure that we have opportunities every step of the way. And that's another big one for me, all of us, I think, to, to assure that we have that opportunity. But the plan you have, the layout, all the relationships, all of that is all solid. I know that for a fact. But at the same time, just making sure that whatever else resources we can bring in, and maybe beyond 14 days. We can go 14 days, Lonny said, but what about after the 14 days? You know, that's another one. But for now, the presentation, you know, the relationships, the total communi- communication and commitment by all of the staff and team is awesome. So, continue whatever we got to do to, to support it. But I just wanted to say, yeah, good job, and we continue to hold on to our beautiful island of Kauai and our state and, and stay connected. Mahalo.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Holland?
Yeah, echoing the gratitude. Thank you, Councilmember Cowden, for organizing this. Thank you, Elton. Thank you, all of you that have worked so hard. Thank you to the community. Thank you, Senator Makala, for being here as well. You know, for me, I was on the fifth floor of Queen's Hospital when that went off in ICU with my dad preparing to go into emergency surgery. And, you know, I was getting blown up with questions, and I spent four hours just like on my phone trying not to freak him out. So, he was like, I was like, everything's fine, everything's fine. Yep. Brian's just trying to keep everything calm. And, you know, I walked downstairs in Honolulu thinking, whoo, I might not be able to go to the ground floor for a little while. Like, if this does hit us, you know, I might, I might not be able to go downstairs. So, I went downstairs to get some fresh air, and the roads were stacked with people. Nobody was moving. And it was, you know, only a few hours really before they had expected everybody to be out. And I, I remember thinking, like, I really hope that we are learning a lot from this experience. And so, you know, what I want to really emphasize gratitude for is like Elton and Kima and all of your ability to adapt as you learn more information, as we go through these trials and as we go through these experiences. What can we make better? How do we, you know, make this solid? How do we think about the short-term 20-to-40-minute window that we might have? You know, I think clearing the roads was stressful. I got a pretty panicked call from one of my nieces who was stuck at Lumahai. It was 4:45. And, you know, they had said to be somewhere at 5:00. I, I think that might have been the stop sign now that we've gone through this. But I think the evacuation of the level of people that were at the beach in summer and Honalei at Blackpot and how overloaded that beach is, and all of those people trying to exit had first access out to the road, and everybody in deep country was kind of behind that. And I think it slowed down what would have been really necessary travel from Ha'iana out through Honalei. And that concerned me. I, I am deeply concerned about the sirens, particularly in a place like Wa'neha that doesn't have cellular service. I think it's absolutely critical that we come up with as many opportunities for notification as possible. And so, the more effort that we can put on Hema to take care of that, I think is really, really important. I appreciate a grander comments about Waimea because I also heard some concern about Waimea. I also was kind of disturbed to see the amount of trash that was left along Kikaha Road. That really surprised me. Everything, beer bottles, trash, just piles up where people had gone to sit and watch and then evacuated and left all of that waste. And so, I think we do have some bigger picture. Where do we send people? How do we manage their trash? You know, these, where, what does that look like? I think we all need to have our individual plans, and I think this was a great run for hotels to figure out what's your plan? You know, our family's thinking about the plan. What happens if the boat's here? What do we do if that's there? How do we manage that? Businesses having their own plan. Who stays? Who has to go? All of those things. I mean, my personal individual plan is going to adapt now that I know that Councilmember Bulisun's so prepared. I'll likely just go to his house. But I think, you know, in, in general, I think it's really important that we do kind of go through these trials as individuals, but also as a community. And so, again, just echoing all the gratitude, I'm really grateful that there was no major impact. We just got a push notification right now saying that Hurricane Kilo has just moved into category four. I think it's a great time and a reminder that wet is coming. And even if we're not maybe going to get a direct hit from a hurricane, we should be preparing for water because it's been a very, very dry year. And in Australia, we're all taught that when the drought gets really, really bad, you prepare for rain. So, we should all be preparing for that raining and flooding. So, I just thank you again. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Bulisun?
For the record, in my emergency plan also is staving off uninvited guests. Just kidding. But I did want to, I did want to, I did want to mention, I just also want to thank all our administration, and that also includes our, our staff, specifically my constituent staff. This was our first, two staff that we, we got added. Part of the conversations that I have with my staff is, is how do we inform and communicate with the community and assess our administration, make sure our community understands what's going on. And I think they did a great job, but there's some training that I'm looking forward to so that way we can, again, up the level. When I think about these presentations, I see what our organizations are doing and what we rely on, that, that focus on this. But the first response is our response. And so, making sure that our closest people are trained is, is really important.
Anyone else?
I, I'll, I'll just want to quickly say thank you so much, Director Ushio, for coming in and giving this. I know in two months you'll have a lot more information, but I didn't want too much time to pass between when the event happened and when the public would be hearing this. I want to thank the great job that you all did along with your many partners and the resident community for largely making wise choices. I want to acknowledge the families, like the Ba'amea family and the Putle family in Ha'iana who had such a terrible, terrible tragedy in the 40s, still around, who I've been able to learn about the loss of their younger siblings and just how powerful it can happen. And, and then also to the Kalihui families that were hurt hard in the 50s with the tsunami there. So, at least among the established community on the North Shore, they're really willing to take this, these, these drills. It's better to not have a problem than not, not have taken the action and take some loss. And back then, they didn't have the sirens. They didn't have all that. I do want to give a shout-out to Honalei Initiative and Ni Mahuli for receiving and caring for the people at KA and the Nepali, helping to ensure there weren't hikers stranded at the, stranded at the end of the road. I did understand that that was, you know, a feat and, and an effort. And I, I was calling down to Honalei though mostly to my friends who were physically disabled and offering, hey, come up, stay at my house, you know, because it's not so easy to get those people out, and it can be frightening and they can feel left alone. I was happy to hear that the town was cleared by about 6 o'clock. So, I was aware of that. I also just want to say, in addition to all the great commentary that has been here that I don't want to repeat, that these many successes and some identified weaknesses at managing this tsunami warning is valuable information for our multi-hazard mitigation plan update. We're kind of at the end of our public hearing window, but I'm sure if people have ideas, they can share it. It's very important. I was happy to learn, I, I assumed our airport would be in the tsunami zone because it's right next to the ocean. So, I, I guess it's high enough. So, that is really good. And I just want to, relative to our multi-hazard mitigation plan and all of our awareness, we do have some enduring vulnerabilities like the director mentioned, but our landfill, our sewage treatment plants, our harbor fuel tanks, our shoreline highways are some, just to name a few. Not easy to correct those challenges, but I think it needs to be in our conscious awareness. And some of those tanks are actually aging quite a bit. So, thank you all for the presentation. And with that, the motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. And that concludes our Public Safety and Human Services Committee.
I'd like to call the Finance and Economic Development Committee to order. Let the referee reflect that all members are present. Clerk, can you please read the first item?
Bill number 2970, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B-2025-905 as amended relating to the operating budget of the County of Kauai, State of Hawaii, for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 by revising the amounts estimated in the Public Access Open Space Natural Resources Preservation Fund, an apapemone meant in the amount of $215,000.
Would you approve?
Second. With that, do we have any questions from the members? I'll suspend the rules. Councilmember Cowden?
You, you want me to do my amendment right up front or?
There is an amendment. Would you like to hear the amendment first?
Would you like to hear the amendment first?
The amendment just changes the amount back to 315,000.
Okay, that's, I was going to ask if they were all right with that.
Yeah. So, I'll go ahead and move to amend this circulated.
Second.
With that, Council Chair pulls.
Yeah, this is just, we received testimony and a petition regarding the, the, the amount of the, the dollar amount. And initially, when we had all met with, with the administration, the, the amount was set at 215,000. And then Open Space Commission changed their recommendation or recommended that we, we approve 215,000. But after speaking with the administration and with the constituents and the community, we felt it best to just restore it to 215,000, giving them the flexibility to do what needs to be done to do a proper memorial for that, that very historical and tragic event.
Any questions on the amendment? Not, we can open up for questions for the admin. Councilmember Cowden?
Well, maybe he just said it. My question was going to be for them because I really appreciated the petition from what I would say is a, a rock star cast of characters of community members, if they had any problem with it, raising it up. So, Chair, did you just say they don't have a problem?
Correct. I met with them prior to the, on the, on the break, and, and they were perfectly fine with it.
Okay, so that, that was my key question.
Okay. Any other questions from the members? If not, while the rules are suspended, anyone in the audience wishing to testify on the amendment? Lonny? amendment?
Uh, for the record, uh, first, I'm very supportive of this. Uh, more, way more than a decade ago in college, I learned about this through marketing textbooks. None of the authors had anything to do with Hawaii. This actually is a very, very famous uh event that occurred, the unionization here on Kauai. I have a process question though, was when I read through the agenda, I saw that there's two items that had the same dollar figure. And so my question was, are we appropriating the same amount of money twice? Or is this some kind of housekeeping where you need one to get the money here and then another one to get the money there, which is what I assume, but, or the public's information? I'm just asking. Thank you very much.
Bruce? Anyone else wishing to testify?
Aloha, um, Council Chair Reposo and members of the council. Um, my name is Kailua Takahashi. Um, thank you so much for your support in, in this um project. I see it as twofold. One, to honor those whose lives were taken. But then secondly, as an educational piece really for the generations to come. I, 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 my parents, both my parents worked for the Kika Sugar Company. And um, and generations of my classmates, we all grew up and surrounded by sugarcane. And so now when you go to the West Side, there's, it's all barren. You don't see nothing. Um, and it's really kind of sad. So this, this monument will stand, stand for me, I think of for all the um generations before me who sacrificed their lives in um supporting our economy here on, on Kauai and for Hawaii. So it really means a lot to, um, to me personally, but I think for the generations to come, that they know what took place in the history behind all of this. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call the meeting back to order. We're on the amendment. Any discussion from the members?
Uh, just, just for the question that came up, the, the first bill transfers the money from the reserve into the open space fund. The second bill designates that same funding for the specific project. So it's, it's one, 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 one amount of money. Thank you.
Councilmember Cowden.
I just want to say that I think this is a very significant piece, um, uh, you know, for labor, for um, the right, just past Labor Day. A big piece of our history here. And then I think, I don't see a rationale that this has to be smaller or equal to Kailua. I think the Kailua piece is really important because I, I've gotten the answers why it was, where, why it was set to not make it bigger than Kailua. But I think this is a, a new park right on the side of the highway that I think will educate visitors and citizens alike. And I think guaranteed children are going to be playing in that park. And I think when we do something kind of amazing to honor, you know, what the history is and help them see that they are a part of the significant history of our island. I think it's, it's healthy and great and everything's expensive now and let's do a beautiful job. I think it'll be a point that will be a site for people maybe to stop and learn about a bit when they go to the West Side as well.
Councilmember Holland?
On the amendment, correct? Discussion? Thank you, Chair, for introducing the increase. Um, I'm thankful that we have that extra bit of wiggle room in case it's needed. So just, yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, I realize um, open space was the one that probably that reduced it. Um, noting that, you know, they wanted to be fiscally responsible with open space money. And um, I think they wanted to encourage um, the public to help contribute to this monument also. I never heard anything about it being bigger than the Kailua monument. They.
That was my.
Kailua plantation days, they can make it as big as they want. Um, you know, with the amount of money they have, and if they need more money, then they can go and fundraise for it. So I have no problem with how big they make it. It's all, you know, uh, from my understanding, they have a lot of artists looking at it and they're going to come up with a plan. And so a committee is going to pick, you know, what is the best rendering that we feel for this area? And hopefully we have enough money for it. If not, then hopefully there's a fundraising campaign or what that can go on also. But um, I'm not opposed to how big that thing can be. So um, with that, I'll be voting in favor of the amendment. Any other discussion from the members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Back to the main motion as amended. Um, any discussion from the members?
Councilmember Holland?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so it was, you know, I think this is such an important thing and I'm really grateful that we're supporting it today. I, I'm actually really honored to be able to vote in support of this because I was invited um, by Auntie Catherine Law and Mike Miranda in twenty eighteen to join their Filipino Research Committee. And I was the only non-Filipino on that committee. Um, and it was such an honor to work closely with them to help to identify the location of that mass grave. And um, when we did the ground penetrating radar, we had three locations that her, really Auntie Catherine, a lot of her research had really identified these possible locations. Um, and it was just an incredible experience to go along with them on that journey and to have that honor um, to help with that. And, you know, the, the work and um, I just want to acknowledge a lot of her research really because our whole group worked together. But Catherine really put in so much effort um, to find the names of those eight others. So we knew eight of their names, but we didn't know eight of them. And she went through and actually completed that research and was able to identify every single one of those people so that their families and their honor can learn of this and know that they're, they're, they're descendants, you know? And I think it's, it's just such an incredible thing. I'm, I'm so thankful to see it come through. I forget when we had the first meeting. I think you were in that first meeting that we had, yeah, many years ago about this idea? And I think there's actually going to be another monument for this, also created at the cemetery, um, I think funded by DAGs. So I think we're going to have these great opportunities to remember this history. You know, it's um ninety-five years. We didn't have a marking and really know where that grave was. There actually is a stone there, but it really wasn't documented. And um, those, those brave people that stood up and fought for what they did in the twenties uh, really helped to establish a lot of, um, many of the rights that later came together in the forties, uh, when unions really started to establish. And I, I've just, it's just been an incredible honor to go through this journey um, for so many years, help to locate that. And I really, um, I want to see this monument go up soon because I want Auntie Catherine to be able to experience it and enjoy it for as long as she can. Um, and I, I really just want to use this as an opportunity to encourage people to come forward, um, to submit designs and to reach out and to, especially people in the Filipino community and especially those from West Kauai, to really try to find um, in, you know, the, the right, the right statue, the right monument. And um, yeah, just want to thank everybody who's gone, followed this through for years. Um, and it's a real honor to be voting yesterday to support this. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Corvalho?
I think in, I mean, this is such an honorable situation. We talking about the past and present and the future. And I think that's the biggest piece, historic and in the educational component that Kailua talked about. And just all of us connecting in this one part of our island that was resonates, you know, in so many different levels. So I just want to uh bring that to the forefront and totally supportive, of course, and whatever other kinds of opportunities like this because it's, we're a special place and this is a special part of our island. So good job in Mahalo.
Sorry, um, anyone in the audience wanted to speak on the main motion as amended? Okay, keep going. Councilmember Cowden?
I said most of it, but I want to say I'm enthusiastically um, support of, of this. And I want to, since we're acknowledging people, to acknowledge Uncle Jerry Nakasone, who was out there ahead of even doing the ground penetrating radar with his divining rod. And so um, he's, he's not Filipino either. So um, he, he was a, a part of that community that um, or he was the one who really first kind of found that. So um, good job for him and just acknowledging what we saw a year ago at the hundred-year blessing on the park site, that this was really a coalition of a number of communities, the Japanese, and then just really honoring the loss of our Hawaiian community that, that passed away there as well. So um, enthusiastic support.
Councilmember Kuli?
Yeah, I just wanted to add my um feelings and aloha. Um, being raised in a union household, ILWU, I think this is a really important part of Hawaii's history and our nation's history. So happy, happy to support it.
Anyone else? If not, oh, Council Chair.
Yeah, I'll just say, obviously I'll be supporting this. You know, um, this is such an amazing event. It, it, I mean, it was tragic, but you know, even as recent as the last meeting where Kailua shared her story about the great grandpa, you just, you never stop learning about what, what happened. There's so many stories out there. And um, it's important that this be a community-driven project, right? I should, me as a guy that lives in Waileu, I'm not Filipino, although I did eat lechon and pork and peas on Saturday, yeah. And it was delicious. Um, but I, I really should have no say uh in what goes there, uh, but the community should and, and the families should. You know, I want this to be like, you know, we've all had the opportunity to visit the war memorials across the nation, the Vietnam Memorial, which is probably one of the most emotional for me, uh, until I came across the nine eleven memorial, which would, that one was just, that one I was floored. Now, that one, that one affects you forever, um, as the others do. And that's what I want with this memorial. I, I want it to be so profound that when the kids come up, they understand the importance of this event and what it had. Not just a celebration of something, but something where, where when you get there and you read what's on this, whatever this will end up being, and you see the names of the individuals that were affected. I want that monument to move people like the nine eleven does and the Vietnam does. That's what I envisioned in this place. And that's why for me, the money, this, we're not, we're not, you know, remember that thing they put out in a state building that whatever that artwork was, we, I know we spent a lot of money decades ago and I'm like, what the heck is that? It's ugly, but it's somebody's art. The mural at the Lehi Airport that looks like, I, I still don't know what that is. I don't know. This has to be different. This has to be where, when you get there, when you leave there, you, you leave a different person because you were, you were fed some information and, and, and you were, and you felt the, the impact. And that's what this needs to be. So happy to support. Uh, and, and like Arrow, I really don't care how big this thing ends up as long as a community agrees, but it needs to be big enough so that the people get the impact that we are trying to portray. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, recall vote on the motion as amended.
Councilmember Bulisun?
Aye.
Councilmember Corvalho?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli?
Aye.
Council Chair Reposo?
Aye.
Committee Chair Kanasuro?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
Bill number two nine seven one, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B dash twenty twenty-five dash nine oh six as amended relating to the capital budget of the County of Kauai, State of Hawaii for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-five through June, June thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-six by revising the amounts estimated in the public access, open space, natural resources preservation fund, CIP, Hanapippe parcel monument improvement in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Second?
No. Move to approve first.
Second?
Then I'll move, I'll move to amend the circulated.
Second.
And again, this is just the, the changing the uh, this bill will put the monies directly in this project fund.
Any questions from the members? Um, it has to reflect the first bill. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Not, um?
We have a registered speaker.
Oh, okay. On the amendment?
Uh, no, not the amendment, sorry, the bill.
Oh, okay. We'll do the amendment first. Um, any final discussion on the amendment? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Back to the main motion as amended. I'll suspend the rules.
We have one registered speaker, Mr. Randall Francisco.
Randy, you got to come up though. You have to say it on the mic.
Uh, thank you, uh, Randall Francisco, Hanapippe, Hanapippe Heights. I just wanted to stand on my testimony and just acknowledge all the good intentions from the beginning and through this process and in a year. Look forward to an art piece that really acknowledges the humanity, the social justice, and the impact of this historic event. Mahalo and salamat poa.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call this meeting back to order. Any final discussion? Not, oh?
I'll just, I just wanted to thank Randy uh, for your hard work. Sonia, for, I know the public doesn't get to see this, but a petition that she signed, I think it was the same function that I had the lechon and, and pork and peas because a lot of the names is the people that were there. Uh, and all the others that submitted testimony from the, the start of this process. And I'm not going to repeat myself, but again, you know, this, this community will dictate where this project goes. But just on your testimony, Randy, that I, I got to read, um, and, and your efforts, Sonia, that makes it easy for us to, to, and not to mention you lobbying the administration as well and, and helping us out with that. Um, makes it a lot easier for us to, to, to vote. So thank you all and to all your team. There's too many to name, but I know there's a lot of people behind your efforts. So thank you.
Councilmember Bulisun?
Final discussion for this? Uh, I'd just like to thank the administration, the many hands that came together and all the unsung and unknown things that happened to get this memory, uh, memorialized. So many pieces that could have let this slip away, um, that no one would learn, um, or know, or that this island and its people could have the ability to recognize. Um, you never know how much effort it takes until you go through it and it's all the people out there that have been working on this, who are here and who have passed. Um, thank you so much. Um, history is such an interesting thing where if you don't remember it, you tend to forget it. Um, and so it's really important as part of institutional, institutional knowledge, both in our community and our, our, our uh ways of being, uh, we have to allow ourselves to make sure that these things stay in place. Otherwise, we tend to uh revert back to experiences or thoughts or ideas that doesn't best reflect where our society is and where it should be going and hopefully is going. Um, and uh, it, it's really a special time, um, being a, of Filipino descent, um, to one, not know, then know, and then carry the responsibility of the work, uh, aside from remembering, but then doing the actual work to continuously to improve the lives of each other's experiences here on, on the island and in the world. And so, um, I'm really thankful and looking forward to um, hearing all the ayes hopefully on this bill. But ultimately, I'm looking forward to carrying on the torch and then passing it on to my son, Kila'a, um, and bringing him to this beautiful memorial that will be completed so that he also institutionally understand where he has come from and where he is going.
Anyone else? If not, recall vote on the motion as amended.
Councilmember Bulisun?
Aye.
Councilmember Corvalho?
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli?
Aye.
Council Chair Reposo?
Aye.
Committee Chair Kanasuro?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And with that, seeing no further business and hearing no objections, the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.